Everyone, my name is Barry Pearlman. It is 9:42 a.m. on Friday, July 29, 2022. I wish to call to order the meeting for the Historic Resources Commission. This is a special meeting called "Outside of Our Agenda." And the reason for calling this meeting is that the very thorough and deep agenda that we had for our regularly scheduled July 11th meeting was not able to be completed. So we've carried on for this meeting on the 29th to complete the agenda of the regularly scheduled third meeting of the year, the July 11th meeting. So I would like to begin to call to order with a roll call, please. Commissioner Orlando?
Here.
Commissioner Phillips?
Here.
Commissioner Swift?
Here.
Commissioner Woods?
Here.
And I'm Barry Pearlman here. Okay, we have a full...
Chair Pearlman, I did want to just take a moment to explain how to participate in the meeting remotely.
Excellent, Annie, please.
So my name is Annie Murphy. I am the staff to the Historic Resources Commission, and I wanted to just briefly explain how to participate this morning. If you have access to a computer with a microphone, you can participate through your computer via the Teams meeting link that is provided on the Planning Department webpage. If you do not have access to a computer with a microphone and wish to provide comments, you must call in by dialing 831-454-2222. And then when prompted, enter the collaboration code 328-175-103. The phone number and meeting code are also provided on your screen once you begin the login process. If you are participating by phone, you must also mute the sound on your computer. The chair will provide time for comments on each agenda item. To comment using a computer, the chair will ask participants to raise their hands by clicking on the open hands symbol at the top of your screen. When the moderator announces your name or phone number, click on the microphone button at the top of your screen to speak. To comment, please state your name and proceed with your comment. At the end of your comment, your microphone will return to being muted. As in a physical meeting, each person may comment once on each item and has three minutes to comment. If you no longer have a comment or question, click on the hands symbol to lower your hand. For those participating by phone, when the chair asks if you would like to comment, you must enter *5 to raise your hand. When you are called upon to provide your comment, enter *6 to unmute your phone and speak. At the end of your comment, you will return to being muted. And Tisha Williams is here today to assist us with the technology. If you have difficulty connecting to the meeting, please email matisha@matisha.williams@santacruzcounty.us. Stephanie Hansen, the Assistant Director of the Community Development and Infrastructure Department, will also be joining us today. And I wanted to take a brief moment to thank Linda Phillips, who has gone above and beyond serving as the Chair to the Historic Resources Commission for over 10 years. So thank you, Linda. And now I wanted to turn the meeting over to our new Chair, Barry Pearlman.
Good morning again, everyone. The next item of business is to approve today's agenda. Today's agenda was posted publicly last week and is available to everyone. Are there any... May I ask for a motion to approve the agenda and then request any interest in modifications? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Alberta. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Neil. Okay, now discussion, any discussion on today's agenda? I think it's quite clear to us. We do intend to get through it. I would like to ask for the cooperation of both our commissioners and our guests for efficient use of time. We would like to try to conclude this meeting in as effective and short a fashion as possible. So with that said, if there's no further discussion, can we have a vote on approving the agenda as posted?
Chair Pearlman?
Yes.
I don't have any modifications, but I did just want to know the late addition of the email from Jean Brockelbank to your packet, and that will be made available to the public as well on our Planning Department, the agenda materials.
Very good. Thank you for that. We will be getting to that agenda item in due course, so it'll tie together nicely. Very good. Can we have a vote to approve the agenda of Commissioner Orlando? Do you accept the agenda?
Yes.
Very good. Phillips, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Swift?
Yes.
Commissioner Woods?
Yes.
And Commissioner Pearlman, yes. Okay, our agenda is in place for today. Now, the next item that we have is approval of minutes of our July 11th meeting. Those minutes have been sent to commissioners and have been posted for the public. We have a motion to approve the minutes of the July 11th meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the July meeting.
And have we a second?
Second.
Very good. Thank you very much. Okay, any discussion on the minutes from the last meeting? Because I'd like to make the comment, and that is that due to the special item that was added for the last meeting, which was a beautifully composed presentation by the Museum of Art and History that took up an unusual amount of time, and therefore, we could not get to the other regularly scheduled items in time. So with that, do we have a vote to approve the minutes? Commissioner Orlando?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Commissioner Swift?
Yes.
Commissioner Woods?
Yes.
And Commissioner Pearlman, yes. Okay, our minutes are approved from July 11th. We can continue with our agenda. Item number four is the Declaration of Ex parte Communications. Any commissioners have any disclosure that they would like to share at this time? Very good. We'll move on to the next item, Public Communications. Any members of the public wish to make a statement? Yes, I recognize Jean Brockelbank.
I've just unmuted myself.
Wonderful. Morning.
Yeah, good morning. As efficiently as possible.
Welcome to the meeting.
I prepared for the meeting to begin at 9:30, and so I turned my computer on, downloaded the app, got everything ready to go at 9:30. And then I sat here and waited and waited and waited. The meeting didn't start until officially 9:42, and then with all of the introduction, you really didn't get going. So here we are at 10:00 to 9:00. My request is this. I'm hoping that the next time the commission has a meeting, that everyone will get ready for it at least 10 to 15 minutes ahead so that you can start on time at 9:30. This is what we do on a commission on which I have sat for 18 years. Everybody is ready to go so that the meeting starts at 9:30. And I know there's difficulties always, but I think I'm just requesting that if I tune in for a 9:30 meeting, that it begin at 9:30. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. Any other public communications, please? Would you kindly put down your hand, Jean?
I don't see any other hands at this time, Barry.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else have a comment at this time? Very good. Thank you very much. Let us move to the next item, which are consent items. And I believe that we did approve the resolution to continue the virtual meetings last meeting on July 11th. So Annie, are you just presenting the written approval today?
You know, so the resolution is actually required for each meeting. So it needs to be adopted each time.
Oh, very good. Thank you.
However, this is on the consent agenda. So I just wanted to explain that as it is on the consent agenda, no action is required by your commission in order for this to be adopted by your commission unless one of the commissioners requests that it be pulled from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda. But otherwise, as a consent item, it will be adopted.
Very good. Point of order and note taken. So we will be continuing with having the ability to have virtual meetings because of health conditions, as rated in our county. Very good. Next item, there are no public hearing items, so we'll go past that. Yes, Jean?
I have a question.
Carolyn, yes.
Yeah. Annie sent an alert about the HRC meeting this morning at 9:20, and it said it's an updated agenda. Did everybody get that?
No.
Annie, I didn't get the agenda. I didn't get an attachment.
The updated agenda was actually sent out, I believe, the day after the first agenda was sent out, and the only change on the agenda was that the the meeting conference ID was updated, and the meeting link was updated in the agenda. So there were no changes to the agenda items.
I didn't catch it. Could you say it again?
Yes. So the updated agenda was sent out, I believe, the day after the initial agenda was sent out, and there were no changes to the substantive items on the agenda. But the change was correcting the login information at the beginning of the agenda, which includes the phone conference ID. So that was the only change to the agenda.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing.
So I believe our agenda is intact as presented, and thank you, everyone. Jean, you have your hand raised. May I call on you, please?
Yes, I did a comment on the consent agenda. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that the commission has to vote to approve the consent agenda. This is how our commission operates. And so that you have to vote. You can't, you have to vote to approve the consent agenda. I think Annie will probably know. Thank you.
Annie, what do you have to say about that?
My understanding is that a vote is not required. If your commission wishes to take a vote, and I can verify that for the next meeting, we can certainly do that.
Well, my understanding is that as a consent item, it does not need to be voted on also. But if it would be an extra simple thing to do, we could call for a quick vote for today and then have it approved as an, it may be an extra thing. And then Annie, could you kindly clarify that for next meeting?
Yes, I will do that.
Okay, for the moment, let us just be extra cautious. And with the possibility that consent agenda items need to be voted on, let us take such a vote. May I call for a vote to approve the consent agenda and to continue the virtual meeting item as listed? Commissioner Orlando?
I?
Commissioner Phillips? Commissioner Phillips, how do you vote? Can Linda hear us?
Linda, I believe you're muted.
Sorry. Yeah, no, I had muted myself. Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Swift?
Yes.
Commissioner Woods?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearlman, yes. Okay, so we have a vote to accept the consent items, and we will confirm the protocol for that for our next meeting. Okay, now, I would like to, from this point forward, stay with our agenda. So I had already asked for public hearing items, and we went back to consent items. I do not intend to do that again today. So for everyone's notification, we will stick with the current item. And if you want to comment on anything that has already been closed, we will not honor it for discussion in order to get through our meeting. Now, for new business, item eight. Okay? Item number 8A is the review and provide comments on the proposed amendments to the historic preservation policies in the general plan, submitted as part of the sustainability update. And this is an item that is continued from the July 11th meeting, where we did not have time to get into it. Before we begin this item, I'm going to turn this over to Annie to make the introduction. But before I do, I would like to recognize that our staffer, Annie Murphy, has put a huge amount of work over the past year into the document that we're about to examine. Okay, I believe that Annie is very expert at this and has been the staffer for the commission and is a core person in the sustainability project. So I wish to give a lot of support to the work being presented by Annie. I want everybody to listen very carefully. And unless you have a really serious question, consider the discretion of your questions. Okay, for the sake of doing the best possible job, going through a lot of material. So we were sent a three-part package as part of the enclosure for the regular July 11th meeting. The first part of the package is a letter dated to the commission from Annie. The second part is Exhibit A, and the third part is Exhibit B. This reflects a huge amount of coordination and work done. And I do hope that the commissioners have had a chance to study this material. Okay, our intention is to try to resolve a decision about this material at today's meeting. Okay, so Annie, may I turn it over to you for further clarification and explanation?
Thank you, Chair. So this is their review of the Sustainability Policy and Regulatory Update, the historic preservation policies. And the purpose is to provide a review for your commission to review and provide a recommendation to the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors on the proposed amendments to historic preservation policies in the general plan as provided in the sustainability update. And to assist in the review and discussion of this item, I will be providing a similar presentation to that that was provided on July 11th with some additional information that may be helpful to you. And the commission's review and recommendation of this item is consistent with the powers and duties of your commission as provided in Chapter 2.58 of the County Code, which includes reviewing historic preservation policies in the general plan from time to time and recommending appropriate additions or revisions to the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors. Next slide, please. The Sustainability Update provides a framework for development in the county over the next 20 years. The update includes an update to the general plan, which is considered the blueprint for land use and for development in the county. The Sustainability Update focuses primarily on development in urban areas while retaining the existing framework, protecting natural and cultural resources, including historic resources. Next slide, please. The update also strengthens and amends selected policies and regulations protecting natural and cultural resources in Chapter 5. And the historic policies are in Chapter 5 of the general plan. The primary focus of historic preservation policies in the general plan is provided in Objective 8.2, which reads, "To protect and, where possible, restore buildings, sites, and districts of historic significance to preserve the rich cultural heritage of the community." Although not the primary focus of the update, staff has seized upon the opportunity to update policies in the general plan regarding historic to support and strengthen historic preservation in our community and support the work of your commission. The updated policies will accomplish the following: strengthen the policy basis for historic preservation; support future updates to the Santa Cruz County Code, Chapter 16.42, Historic Preservation, over the 20-year planning horizon of the general plan; support the goals and concerns of your commission while also allowing time for research and community outreach necessary to develop ordinance amendments that address more complex historic preservation issues. Next slide, please. Note that under state law, the general plan can be amended as frequently as four times per year. It is common to amend general plan policies where appropriate to support new ordinances so that the adoption of the Sustainability Update will not prevent future amendments to the general plan policies regarding historic resources. Following is a review of key substantive changes to the general plan policies and strategies. And Exhibit A includes all the proposed amendments to the general plan policy. New language is shown in underlying text, and language proposed to be deleted is shown in strike-through text. Any text is the existing policy. Exhibit A also includes text boxes that describe other minor changes to policies and strategies. So one new focus is to encourage the maintenance of historic buildings and support future ordinances that encourage or require the maintenance of historic resources in order to prevent the eventual loss of historic resources through neglect. The new policy, ARC 8.2.7, reads as follows: Historic Property Maintenance. Encourage the maintenance and upkeep of historic resources to avoid the need for major rehabilitation and to reduce the risks of demolition, loss through fire or neglect, or impacts from natural disasters. The policy is intentionally worded in a general way to allow for additional research, community outreach engagement, and consider a variety of approaches, and ultimately, to develop a well-crafted ordinance that is effective and can be supported by the community. The updated strategy regarding incentives for historic preservation calls for considering advising the subject for expanded uses such use to support an economically viable use and support the repair or rehabilitation of historic resource. The strategy also calls for considering additional incentives for retaining and maintaining historic resources. Next slide, please. Strategy 8.2P is a new strategy added to continue the existing practice regarding reviewing applications for the demolition of any structure that is 50 years old or older to ensure that appropriate review is required for such structure that should prevent such a structure intentionally qualified for listing as a historic. The strategy reads, "Continue the review of proposed applications for demolition of any structure more than 50 years old that has not been previously surveyed for historic significance and require a historic report prepared by a qualified historic consultant for structures that may have the potential to qualify as a historic resource as determined by county planning staff." The project also updates the language regarding designation of historic districts in the county. Apparently, have historic districts. The previous multi very costly effort to designate Aptos Village as a historic district was undertaken by the county, but the district designation ultimately failed as Aptos community does not support the proposed designation. However, many individual properties in Aptos Village were designated. With the county resources, time, and expertise of your commission is used effectively, the strategy has been updated to ensure that community support exists for designation and to remove Aptos Village from the list of potential districts as there is not been community support for this designation. Next slide, please. These strategies also address improving access to public information on the Planning Department website. And a new strategy is also provided to support considering applying for grants and updating the county historic context statement. This context statement was prepared in 1994, so it was updated and does not provide a complete historic context for the county. Next slide, please. Your meeting in July, the existing strategy regarding historic resources inventory has been updated to indicate that funding is necessary to support future survey updates. As recommended by your commission on July 11th, the language in this strategy was updated to add the word prioritize. The new language added to the strategy now reads, "Prioritize seeking funding for updating the Santa Cruz County Historic Resources Inventory. Prioritize that surveys in areas that have not been recently, that have not been updated recently." This new language indicates that seeking funding for updating the county inventory is a priority for the county. Next slide, please. A new strategy is also added to broaden support from the county for local museums and other organizations involved in historic preservation, which supports the concerns of your commission, that the county should support a variety of historic preservation organizations in addition to the Museum of Art and History. The strategy reads, "Support local museums and other local organizations involved in historic preservation to increase community awareness and appreciation of the value and importance of historic preservation." A new strategy is also provided for environmental review to reinforce the current practice and emphasize that environmental review is required for any potential to significantly impact historic resources. Next slide, please. An environmental impact report was prepared for the Sustainability Update and assessing whether it has potential for significant impacts to historic resources and other environmental resources. The EIR also considered the potential impacts of additional development that could be anticipated under the Sustainability Update project. Taking a very conservative approach, the EIR concluded that because the potential for future development accommodated by the Sustainability Update to cause a substantial adverse change to an historical resource cannot be precluded, impacts to historical resources are considerably considered potentially significant. To reduce potential impacts, the EIR provides two mitigation measures that will be implemented by the county. Mitigation Measure 1 would require an evaluation for development proposals involving any structure more than 50 years old that has not been previously surveyed. And if the structure potentially meets designation criteria, a DPR form would be required. Mitigation Measure 2 requires appropriate documentation of any structure for which an application to demolish or relocate the structure has been approved. And this would include still and video photography, a written record with site-specific history, and appropriate contextual information. Next slide, please. So here are the future steps that staff will take and also recommended future actions for your commission to implement the updated general plan policies and strategies. Staff will prepare ordinances for review by your commission. The ordinances will include an incentive-based approach to encourage the maintenance of historic structures by allowing additional uses in the zone district where such uses can support the maintenance or rehabilitation of a designated historic resource. This ordinance has been This ordinance has been previously discussed with your commission. Staff will also prepare an ordinance implementing mitigation measure one and a new strategy, and the new strategy, ARC 8.2P. The ordinance will require a permit and evaluation for the demolition of a structure 50 years old or older that has not been previously surveyed. Will require a DPR form for a property which may qualify for listing and will require that the remodel of a structure that qualifies for listing must comply with the Secretary of the Interior standards. Staff will also prepare an ordinance to implement mitigation measure two. And this ordinance will add to the existing requirements and findings for demolition or relocation of a historic structure to require appropriate documentation, which may, which includes still and video photography, written record with site-specific history, and appropriate contextual information. So for recommendations for your commission for a future work plan regarding the Sustainability Update general plan policies, we are commissioned to consider and prioritize general plan policies and strategies supporting historic preservation, including considering an ordinance to prevent demolition by neglect, future historic surveys, consider updating the context statement, evaluating the Mills Act, and other priorities. Note that the general plan does have a 20-year planning horizon, so policies and strategies are implemented, are anticipated to be implemented over that 20-year timeframe. Next slide, please. The updated policies and strategies for historic resources in Chapter 5 of the general plan as provided in the Sustainability Update. Support the current work of your commission, also providing support for more comprehensive future updates to the county code to further support the preservation of our historic heritage for future generations. It is therefore recommended that your commission review the proposed amendments to general plan policies regarding historic resources in the Sustainability Update provided in Exhibit A, and recommend that the planning commission and board of supervisors approve the proposed amendments. Thank you. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Annie. This is a very thorough report and certainly represents just a huge amount of work. I recognize that this is a large part of your workload for the planning department, and I think that it's been done with a high degree of excellence, and I want to thank you for it. Now, the way I would like to handle this today is that I'd like to wait a few moments before we put a motion on the floor. And I'd like to ask for comments first from commissioners and then the public, and after which I would like to ask for a motion to approve this package. So may I ask, are there any questions commissioners would like to ask Annie or comments they wish to make? Commissioners. Neil.
Thank you, and thank you, Annie, for all the hard work on this. I think overall, it's really an exciting direction to be going here for the county. I, well, I think there's a lot of questions I have. I think it's a develop, developing document here. There's some things as a new commissioner I don't quite understand. I'm not going to take the time for you to educate me right now. I'll try and do that later. Some of the funding mechanisms puzzle me to get some of these things done. So I'll be educated about how that might work in the future. I only had one specific comment that I would just like some feedback on, is that why for the historic districts was Aptos Village recommended to be omitted? The paragraph above says that, that it was omitted due to the failure of previous efforts to designate this area as a historic district. So what, what makes that a failure? It seemed to me that this would be so important to keep this as a historic district.
Neil, are you, to whom are you directing your question?
I'm actually asking Annie.
Yes, I would agree with that. Annie, do you have a, can you provide more information here?
Yes, and I believe that Carolyn made it on the commission as well during that time, so she may have some additional insight to share as well. But it was an extensive effort, worked with a consultant, and went through the process of, you know, creating a historic district, and the community did not support it. So, so essentially, in order to, these, these designations don't work unless there's really support for the community for this designation. So it doesn't seem fruitful to retain that in the general plan when the community has previously indicated they did not support the designation. If your commission, you know, wishes to retain it back in as a potential district, you know, that could certainly be an option, but the intention is to make sure that county resources and commission staff time is, you know, used effectively where there may be a positive result.
So my one follow-up comment would be then, that I would wish to maintain that as a historic district. I don't know how we make that recommendation, Barry, but that's just my input on that.
Well, I think that what you're, I believe, if I understand accurately, that you are suggesting that we do not eliminate Aptos Village in the list of potential historic districts. Is that correct?
That's correct, and I think that would be something that I would want us commissioners to agree upon. If I'm the lone man out there, I'll accede to that, but that's why I just put that on the, on the table there.
Okay, for efficiency sake, I'm going to hold off before I call upon anybody, and I'm gonna, I, I do see we have people with hands raised, but are there comments from other commissioners about this comment made by Neil regarding Aptos Village? I do see Carolyn has her hand up. May I call upon you?
Yeah, I just wanted to support Neil's idea, and I was going to bring that up also, that I think Aptos should be included as a, I mean, to eliminate it now after 20 years is, it doesn't seem to fit. I mean, that, that decision to, by the residents of Aptos 20, 20 years ago, doesn't really indicate how the community feels about historic, you know, preservation or establishing a district now. So I know the work on that was, was intensive. It was done by Charlene DuVall and Edna Kimbrough. And the community, I believe they went to a meeting. I mean, it was a community meeting where the community said, no, we don't want this. And so that was determined by who, you know, the number of people who were motivated to go to a meeting. It didn't really reflect, or did it, the feelings of, of the residents of the Aptos District? So I think it should be included again.
Thank you, Carolyn. I believe that if we're in doubt, you're suggesting it's healthier to leave it in there for the possible future rather than eliminate it. This is a living document and can continue to be modified. So if for the time being we have that feeling, we could probably adjust accordingly. Next commissioner that has their hand raised is Linda Phillips. I recognize you, please.
This is not about Aptos, so if other people want to discuss Aptos and get that.
Very good. Any other comments on Aptos before we recognize Linda's comment? Okay, let's keep that in mind. Neil, I might suggest that you, you'll make the motion and include that when, when the time comes. Linda, go right ahead. Continue with your comment.
Commissioner Perman, just really quickly, I saw there is another hand up, but it looks like it might be from a member of the public. So are we just looking for commissioners' comments at this point?
First, I'm taking commissioners' comments, and then I'll recognize Kate Minot, who I see, and may perhaps there are other hands as well. But yes, we will acknowledge everybody. We're just calling on the commissioners first.
I just wanted to make that clear. Okay, thank you.
I also wanted to comment that I thought that this, these policies were more proactive in looking at what the commission would do, part of what our responsibilities are. And it's very welcomed, and some of the policies that have been identified, we are now including as part of our goals and tracking them and hopefully making progress. However, and I'm not sure maybe this question is to Annie, when you, and I assume, Annie, you were working with a team in putting these together, on some of them, for example, in dealing with 8.20, or 0, a new policy, talking about supporting local museums and other local organizations, you have in here the Historic Resources Commission, Planning Department, and the Parks, Open Space, and Cultural Resources. How were you envisioning this being logistically, you know, put together and executed, considering the Brown Act? Would this be subcommittees, or would this be a sequential type of action? How would this be, how would this be done?
It essentially leaves, provides multiple options that the Parks Department, as you know, was already involved in the Museum of Art and History. So, so at this point, there's not a specific work program or approach for, for the collaboration. But it just indicates that the Historic Resources Commission, along with the Parks, Open Space, and Cultural Resources Department, would likely, you know, be involved in considering organizations. And often, you know, there's some overlap with organizations that support historic preservation as well as parks and open space, so.
Okay, because MAU is not part of, part of the Parks, Parks Department. MAU is a separate entity. So, so what you're saying is that for us, and taking that on as a goal, we would be responsible for coming up with a strategy and then contacting these other organizations? I'm just, I'm trying, I, I just can't get my arms around. These are great, and I think we should be looking and trying to put them in action. I just don't know, looking at the problems we've had with, with both people and money and time of being able to put these into effect and executing them.
Yes, I mean, this, this does have the 20-year planning horizon, so this may be something that may not happen right away, especially for research. It might be coming down the pipe, but the intention is to, you know, support the intention of your commission that additional organizations can be, receive some support from the county in addition to the Museum of Art and History. So I think, you know, the details and how that might be done, but the intention is, it's, provides general support for, for that to move forward, but it, there's not a specific work program that's identified or strategy, but it just sort of, by having that in there, it indicates that the county would be willing to support other organizations.
So when you say, when you say the Museum of Art and History, you're mentioning them because they are a line item in the county, in the Parks and Rec budget. So they get some county funding, but they are not part of, and the, and the Parks Department do not oversee to operate MAU. MAU, that's just one avenue of funding for them, is this county funding. So, so when you, when I look on this in every policy where I see Parks, Open Space, and Cultural Resources, instead, should I be reading MAU?
No, no, the, the Museum of Art and History, that's an organization that we support. But the, the Parks Department is involved in determining how, how, in the continuing agreement, how the funding from the county is to be allocated. So involved in developing contracts, determining what, what organization might be appropriate to support.
Okay. Okay. All right, that, that, I, I, I've got a better understanding now. And I think that that, that answers my questions.
Thank you, Linda. Carolyn, is your hand still raised? Thank you. Okay. Okay, very good. I would also like to comment on this, and I have a great appreciation that Annie has included the direction set from our commission in prior meetings, which does something like Item 8.20. That is a reflection of conversations that we have had, wanting to have more outreach to the other organizations. And I'll name an example of that here, and that is that I have been in touch with Roger Mason from the Loma Prieta Museum. And they're very interested in networking with the Historic Resources Commission. And I think that we're going to probably get the Loma Prieta Museum to actually put up a booth in next year's MAU History Fair. So this is an inclusive item, and I appreciate very much seeing it added to the plan. Okay, I think that's all the commissioner comments. Now, Carolyn?
I still wanted to comment.
Please.
This is, this is difficult because it's hard to articulate. I read this, and it, and, and I don't, I don't want to sound critical because I realize it is a tremendous amount of work, but it's also written in, in government tees. In that, it's, it's sort of like trying to shove spaghetti in your brain. It's, it's, it goes around and round to make a, a point. So I really appreciate the summary that Annie has given us, which is much clearer, much more condensed, and much easier to get to the point. And so when I was reading this, that, I think, because, because the language of it is, is sort of difficult to go through, the impression that I was getting all along was that a lot of the things that we would already expect to be done in terms of, of judging whether or not a building is historic or following the Secretary of Interior standards and all of the requirements that we have, we, we have this expectation that these things will be done. This, this document sort of is underscoring what's, what we're already doing, which is good, but I'm not really sure what's new and what's already been there, you know, there's. So I'm, what I'm sort of focusing on is the Sustainability Update. Does it, is it going to make it more difficult to save historic structures? Because there's this sort of repeated reference to, oh, yeah, if this moves into urban areas, as we begin to develop urban areas, that it will become more difficult, there'll be greater challenges to saving, preserving historic structures. So I'm just not real clear on that, whether or not that's part of the commentary, is that there are increased dangers to historic structures, or that there's greater protection. So I'm, that's just a question.
Yes, I can, I can respond to that. So the EIR did state, based on a conservative basis, and the, you know, the potential for additional development, that there was a potential to significantly impact. that there was a potential to significantly impact historic resources. But I, I believe that with the changes that we'd be making, that there will actually be stronger protection for historic resources. We, yeah, we do have, you know, the current, so, so for discretionary applications, we do currently review it and require a DPR form if it's found to be potentially eligible. But we will be, and that's under CEQA, but we will be codifying that, that approach that we're doing now as, as an ordinance, so that we'll have that basis for requiring the DPR forms. And then we will also be requiring a permit for the demolition of any structure that's 50 years old or older that has not been previously surveyed. So, so even if it's not considered a discretionary application that's subject to environmental view, we would also be requiring for those structures. So it will identify additional buildings and require review for those that currently we don't have the regulatory basis for doing. So I, I believe that will actually strengthen our ability to review and require the preservation of structures that have not been previously surveyed.
Thank you, Annie. I would like to say that I agree with your statement, Annie. I believe this strengthens our position as chair and as particularly being the new chair of the commission. I put a lot of time into this document and reread it multiple times. And yes, there is a lot of government speak in here, but essentially, I believe this is very well targeted. And I believe what this does largely is take and it aligns the general plan. It's not so much that it updates what we're doing. It just makes the plan more accurate to those things we're doing. I think it's been very well matched, and the growth we've experienced is represented in some of these changes. So I'm in strong support of the document, and I'm in strong support of approving the sustainability. With that said, I believe the commissioners have made all of their comments. I would like to call, I see at least two guests have hands raised. I believe Kate, you were, you had your hand raised first.
Thank you. My name's Kate Minot. I live in Aptos. Since the beginning of time, I have watchdog Aptos Village plans, and they're very different iterations. I wanted to check in with, with you and with Carolyn to find out when you described the Aptos Village District, what, what, what are the parameters now for, for that district?
Good question, and I do not have the answer. Does anyone know that?
I, I can respond to that. Currently, there is no, because the community or the county effort did not succeed for designating the district. Currently, there is no historic district designation in Aptos Village. Was that your question?
Well, it, in, in the early 2000s, I had done a presentation to the Historic Resources Commission about doing a historic overlay for Aptos Village that included the side street, the side neighborhood, and would like go back into the Mangle's House too.
Yes.
And merchants did not like it. So it, it was, it wasn't approved to that, to those parameters. And I know we have Sinclair Buildings, the Bayview Hotel, and then the barn that's been, the trust has been saved. So I just am curious what specifically is now included in an Aptos Village historic district?
There is no such designation as a historic district, so there are no parameters or boundaries associated. I recognize what you're saying, make it very comprehensive, and the more comprehensive it is, the more it qualifies. Perhaps, Kate, are you suggesting that you would like to keep the village in the possibility of becoming a historic district?
I agree, yes. I, I agree with whatever Carolyn Swift wants. I'm all for it.
No, I, I understand. It's the voice of staying open to the future possibility of making it a historic district. So that would be striking out the new change and leaving it as it was earlier stated.
Can I add something?
Yes.
I just, I think part of what Kate is asking is what was considered a district at the time the community decided not to have a district. And, and that basically was with the Aptos Street and Valencia Street, what they considered front and back street. It's that little subdivision of, of the heen houses. It was just two blocks, I think, and, and the barn, I think, was, was part of it. So it wasn't very big.
Okay, yeah, no.
And I, I think, oh, sorry, I did want to clarify that all of the properties that were recommended for designation were designated. So there's very, there's numerous historic buildings, residents in Aptos Village area that are in our inventory, but just the district designation did not.
Okay.
Correct. Thank you.
So it sort of addresses specific buildings rather than a general overlay, as it stands now?
Yeah, exactly.
Perfect. Thank you. Go for it.
You're very welcome. Okay. Neil, I do see that you have your hand raised. I will, I will call on you next to include you in the priority of, as a commissioner.
Are you calling me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Just back to this historic, this on the buildings. So is the line of buildings at the side of the street where Cafe Sparrow is, some of those older buildings, has that never, ever been considered as part of the historic district? I mean, I, I hate to take time educating ourselves again, but it sounds like a historic district is designated by actual buildings in the district and not a geographical overlay?
No, there is no geographical overlay at this time. We're just, they're open to any possibilities.
Got it.
I believe that's accurate. Okay, does that answer your question, Neil?
Yeah, in part, yes.
Okay, Carolyn, do you still have a question?
No.
Okay, very good. May I call on Jean next, please?
Hi, Commissioners, thank you. Very briefly, I want to also say that what Kate Minot and what Carolyn have brought up, I agree about keeping Aptos Village in for your consideration when you make a motion later on to vote on this agenda item. I also am a little bothered by the government tees. And accolades, by the way, to Annie Murphy and all her work. When, when, when I offer critique, it, it's not of Annie and her work, it's the content that I care about. I'm, I found words that are not defined. For instance, what's appropriate documentation? It says appropriate documentation. It says potentially significant. It says significantly impact, but significantly, potential and appropriate are not defined. At least I couldn't find them. So that kind of leaves it open-ended. And I'd like to draw your attention also to ARC 8.2.4. And that was to expedite the review process, to expedite the review process, allow minor alterations to be reviewed by trained county staff. We don't have minor defined, and we don't have trained defined. And so that, to me, that expedite, I'm, and I'm bothered by that. And I'm, I'm not sure if anybody else noticed that. And then the last thing that I'd like to say is that on the, and I can't remember the section, but it said, seek funding for updating the historic inventory. It used to just say, do it. Now, you know, do it, just do it. Now it's been incorporated to seek funding in the general plan. And I always thought the general plan was a broader statement of policy and what, what we want. And this, to me, funding is, doesn't strengthen the general plan for the historic commission, even though, even though it's, it's clearly saying we want to do this. But without that seek funding and reading it originally, it just said, just do it. And so I, I hope that my comments are clear and, and thank you for hearing me.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have now entertained discussion from commissioners. We've gotten commentary from our staff. We've had public input. I am looking for a motion on the sustainability update. Okay, perhaps that motion could include elements that have been discussed here. Certainly, leaving Aptos Village alone and not striking it from the potential historic districts is one. But I'm chairing here, so I'm seeking some support from commissioners. Does anyone wish to propose such a motion? If there is no motion, then we cannot take a position on this document.
Barry, I propose to make a motion to accept the sustainability plan for the Historic Resources Commission as written with the change of on policy. What was it? Policy?
It's actually Strategy 8.2N.
Strategy ARC 8.2N to leave Aptos Village in the list of considered designation for historic districts.
Very good. Thank you, Neil. Second? Okay, now I'm going to ask whether commissioners have any further comments that they would like to make before we call for a vote. Okay, nothing from commissioners, anything from the public? Okay, we have a motion on the table. And we'll call for a vote to accept the sustainability report, striking the clause about eliminating Aptos and keeping it included as a potential historic district. Commissioner Orlando, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner Swift?
Aye.
Commissioner Woods?
Yes.
And Commissioner Pearlman? Yes. Okay, we have accepted the updates on the sustainability report for the general plan. I will remind you all that this is a living document and that we will receive from staff in the future continuing updates. If anyone on the commission has any suggestions for continued updates to the plan, I believe that Annie is open to that, and she can record and collect your suggestions and then implement them the next time there is an update done. So we have now approved that. The agenda item is complete. Thank you very much, everyone. This is a very difficult project because it's so comprehensive. I appreciate the attention given by commissioners. I appreciate the feedback given by guests. Thank you all. Okay, the next item we have is new business item B, and my name's on that item. So I'd like to take a moment. I'd like you each to consider the draft letter that was included to your packet, which there was, there's a letter, and then there was an update that Annie sent out, I believe, yesterday, which is an introduction that would go at the beginning of the letter. So essentially, essentially, let me take a moment and explain this. Okay. Since the beginning of June, I have experienced two direct meetings with county supervisors. Linda and I had lunch with Supervisor McPherson and spent two hours with him. And the following week, I met with Greg Capit, who is my supervisor for my district, and I gave him my annual update report, and we brainstormed for a couple of hours. I developed this item, the Santa Cruz County Commission's Suggestions for Oversight. I developed this item as a tool to take to each of the meetings with the supervisors. And this was reviewed pretty much as written, couple of small changes have been made to it. But at the end of each meeting with each supervisor, I was requested to present this letter from our commission to the board. I was invited and requested to present this letter to the Board of Supervisors. It was considered to be a very helpful tool that was opening up an area that they had not really pursued very much. And it's in the spirit of updating the general plan. In that spirit, updating the oversight for commissions would be important. Now I'd like to take a moment and say why I did it. Well, I joined as a commissioner for my district six months before the shutdown for the pandemic. So I had three live meetings, and then we went into virtual meetings. I noticed that there was information I did not have, and I accepted my job as commissioner with a lot of good faith and not a lot of factual information. It also came to my attention that my supervisor, Greg Capit, did not have a lot of information about my commission either. Then last year, Neil joined us, and I found the same thing with Neil, that Supervisor Koenig, who was new to the Board of Supervisors, did not know much about the commission. And Neil took the assignment on good faith. I'm very fortunate that we have Neil. I think we're all very fortunate that we have somebody with Neil's quality and commitment and intelligence joining us. Great attitude, very helpful. But that's based on good luck rather than a calculation. So it seemed that what was missing was a packet of information about what commissions do and what is the role of a commissioner. And it seemed that that packet would be a good tool for the Board of Supervisors to have to work with candidates for the commissions as a tool to discuss the job as a commissioner. So we are reaching outside of the role of our specific commission to the generic and the overview of the role of all commissioners for the 24 commissions. And it stimulated two of our five supervisors enough that they asked for this report to be developed for the supervisors. And so here's the very packet that you've been given. And then I recognized that if we were to approve this, and if we were to send this to the Board of Supervisors, it needed some introduction. So the second document, which is dated today's date, July 29th, and opens up with the words "as an advisory group" to the Board of Supervisors. Okay, that's the secondary document, and it would be how the letter would open. So the combination.
I'm sorry, I was going to say, I did create a slide for that. Natasha, can you bring up the next slide?
Thank you very much. That would be very helpful. I, I appreciate that. Okay, let's see.
She may have sent away from her desk and for some reason I, oh, there we go. Okay.
Great. Okay, so there is the introduction that would come just below the date before the heading of Suggestions for Oversight. And if the commission wishes to support this idea and have this letter come directly from our commission, then we've included my signature and Linda's signature as Chair and Vice Chair. And I would ask for a motion to send this to the board and then entertain discussion. So if this interests you, do we have such a motion to send this letter to the board and then we'll begin the discussion?
I move that we send this, what, what are we calling this, Barry? You're, I, I use the word onboarding, but what do you?
Suggestions for Oversight. How about that?
Suggestions for Oversight. I, I move that we approve this to forward this on to the Board of Supervisors for consideration.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Alberta. Okay, now, how about discussion? Anybody have anything they wish to either ask me or suggest as their? Carolyn, yes. Neil, okay, I'll call Carolyn first. I saw her name, then Neil.
Okay, so when I read this, I thought, isn't there, there's got to be something on, on rules and, and requirements related to commissioners on, on the web, you know, under Santa Cruz County. And so I looked and, and yeah, there's this chapter, Chapter 2.38. And let's see if I'm looking. I have another computer here than I'm trying to get it up on. But it, it lists a whole bunch of things you can look up about commissions and mission creative creation procedures, membership qualifications, applications, terms of office. I mean, a lot of, a lot of, and some of the things that are in your suggestions for oversight, you know, length of term, expectations for petty cash, the role of the staffer, I mean, that is all in here. So I was just thinking commissioners might want to read this first before, before putting this together, before putting your suggestion together, because it looks like here's a county document that that comes quite a lot.
I, I believe that's very accurate, Carolyn, but what I also believe is that I, those details are, they're not a priority for the supervisors. And the two supervisors I met with quickly acknowledged that the commissions needed more of their attention. And the idea of my sending this in is that it would begin, it would be the initializing of the momentum for the Board of Supervisors to revisit their commissions and maybe modify some of the language in that plan. So although there may be, although there may be overlap between what exists and what we're pointing out, I also believe that what we're pointing out, that there, there are real questions that people have, even if it's addressed in the general plan and even if it's part of policy, I think it needs to be revisited and refreshed. So this document is meant as a stimulator. And I'm actually okay if it duplicates certain things that are already answered because it points out that we may have the answers, but we're not aware of them. So you'll recognize in these things that we have discussed, even going down to Item 3C, the rotating chairmanship and the expectations. I think that is a highly amorphous subject that is dealt with in a generalized and random way, not with a plan. If there is a plan in place, we're not strongly aware of it, nor are the supervisors. So I hope that addresses your concerns somewhat. Neil, you also had your hand raised?
Yeah, briefly, I think it's one thing to have qualifications that you would look at and see that takes some kind of a proactive effort to do that. Then in the heat of the moment, when you're nominated or you accept the position and you've not really gone back and look at what the qualifications could be, you've accepted it. I think the word that's missing in this document for me is the word onboarding. So even in that first line, one, develop an onboarding information packet for all persons considering for commission seats. So I see this very much as the onboarding aspect. You've accepted it. Now here are the things that you need to be aware of in taking this position. That's just my input on that.
Well, Neil, your input is highly valued because you're the newest commissioner and you're the person who's experiencing this in the first person. So I think it's very valuable and perhaps we can modify the proposal to add the word onboarding, if that seems comfortable to everyone. I don't think that that in any way diminishes it. In some ways, it may strengthen it. So I think your suggestion is certainly well received by me. If somebody would like to move to modify the proposal and include the word onboarding, we would be happy to take that. Yes, Alberta?
Isn't there another name for onboarding? That sounds so much like a something the FBI would be doing.
Boy.
Alberta, we haven't even gotten to the background checks yet.
I know, but I don't even, it sounds ominous to me.
So when, Alberta, when the FBI is finished with them, do we put them in the Davenport jail?
Oh, yeah, I would like to do that.
Ooh, ooh, that's good.
Well, excuse, I don't care what term is used. Onboarding's a modern term. The personnel departments use now.
Yes, it is, it is. And I think that, I think that the alternative word to it, that might be more familiar. I, I agree with you, Neil. Onboarding is the word that is currently used. It, it's an alternative word to incoming in some ways. It's the, it's the idea of I'm okay with either word. However, however, it comes from you, my commissioners, please. Carolyn?
I'm, I'm allergic to buzzwords. And, you know, I have a hard time with the word sustainability. Just, it's just wired into me. So onboarding is easy to figure out. So I, I think we could probably handle that one. But I, in, in looking at your list, and Alberta may be able to add something on this too. Are you thinking of sending exactly what you gave us to the Board of Supervisors?
Yes.
Okay, well, then I suggest some editing.
Okay, are you suggesting that that editing happen now in the moment? Or are you suggesting that you'd like to defer this, do some editing and bring it back at another time?
I, you know, I don't really have an issue with one way or another. It's just that looking at this is that's, that's not generally a way an outline would appear with a capital A, B, C, D, you know, it somehow the format is, is not quite right. And I, I don't, on the top of my head, I can't make a suggestion, but you know, probably on the internet, there's, there's a template for, you know, sending, sending an outline and it would give you the current proper way. I mean, generally you would indent. You know, it'd be item number three and then indent it from, from item three, there would be not in caps, A, B, C, D. I mean, it's just a technical thing, but you want to have it accurate, I would think. And it's just a small thing. And what else? I saw something else. Oh, the other thing is that several words are capitalized that probably shouldn't be. It's just a small thing, but you might want to change it, you might not.
Okay, I, I developed this document and I don't mean to sound like I am covetous or envious. I just, I will synopsize by saying I used what I thought was just logic. I did not go for any formality in it. I basically developed this as a conversational document. And basically, two supervisors said to me, hey, this is wonderful. Can you send this to all of us? And so in the spirit of that, I just added the beginning and have presented it. If the commission determines that they would like to see more attention given to this document before it goes to the Board of Supervisors, then you can so advise and propose. This is, this is our baby. We can do what we want with it. Neil?
I'm wondering, I, I share Carolyn's concern for formatting. So if we're, if we're, if we're presenting this on to other professionals out there in the field, then it could stand from reporting. Maybe what we do is we approve what this content is in the term of efficiency. And then Barry, I can help you. We can work and we can just put this in a little stronger outline form. That's the accepted way that you read an outline when you present this.
Well, I think that's, that's a very efficient way. If the, if the commission is prepared, I think that that would take modifying the initial motion to include accepting this and then perhaps-
We're suggesting, are you suggesting- We accept the content, but it will be reformatted for presentation to the Board of Supervisors.
Of, okay, are, would, would you turn that into a modification of the, of the original motion?
I move that we accept the suggestion for oversight for the 24 commissions in the county. And that we accept the content of this, but we reformat it before its final presentation to the Board of Supervisors.
Would that be that you and I would be an ad hoc committee to do that?
Well, yeah, we'll get it done.
Got it.
I share, I share Carolyn's concerns. I, yeah, I think we should just put our best foot forward on, on this.
Very good. I, I appreciate that.
I'd just like to, I don't think I quite finished what I was going to say, so I'm sorry. But I have one more thing to add. When I was looking at this, this chapter that I was referring to, Chapter 2.38, it explained that there's like 40 commissions altogether and, and each one is a little bit different. So are we asking the, we're thinking of asking the Board of Supervisors to put out a pamphlet that would apply to all 40 commissions, some of which are appointed and some are not.
That's a great question. That, that's an, that's excellent. And I would like to respond to that myself. Okay, being that I worked with these guys. What I, what I truly see happening here is that this stimulates, I do know, I have the information from Supervisor McPherson that on October 28th, 2022, the Board of Supervisors is going to be having the topic of commissions on their agenda. Part of it is going to be linked to the survey, A Santa Cruz Like Me. And part of it is going to be a general oversight and discussion on commissions. Now, what I actually see when they get down to the detail, once this goes to the board and if they start working on it, I actually personally see two documents. One is a very short document that is a uniform set of standards for all county advisory commissions. And then I see the supervisors coming back to each commission saying, write your own description of what your commission does. And then all supervisors would have that. So this is leading to further documents that would be developed down the road. A generic one of all commissions and a specific one individual to each commission. And those would reside with each supervisor and their aides. And they would pull it out and give it to appropriate candidates as the commissions continue to evolve and change their composition. Both specific and generic.
It said, it, it says in, in the Chapter 2.38 that commissions do that. They do. So that, that is acknowledged that that's, that that process is, is one that's acceptable.
However, the two documents do not exist. The documents just aren't there. Neil didn't get anything from Manu. I didn't get anything from Greg.
Well, what I'm saying is there's this chapter-
Yes.
-that, that covers a lot of what's in your letter. And your letter, you're saying is to sort of light a fire under the Board of Supervisors to pay attention to for the need for new members to receive more and better information.
Well, I also think that this is intended to help the supervisors do a better job.
Well, the supervisors is going to meet in October, as you say-
Yeah.
-to discuss a Santa Cruz like me and, and references to commissions. And yet you've just said, Board of Supervisors admits that it doesn't know anything about commissions committees. And so we're going to go and make decisions about commissions based on information that they don't possess.
Well, that's the idea of this document is to remind them and to highlight to them the knowns and the unknowns.
Who are you suggesting is going to write this?
Well, I think that the Board of Supervisors is probably going to form a committee and defer it to next year to be done by a committee and bring it back to the board.
A committee of supervisors?
Um, no, a, a committee that, well, okay, now we're winging it. Now, now I'm out there kind of talking in the future in a way I shouldn't, but my perception is that if we can get the Board of Supervisors to recognize that they need to pay more attention to their commissions, that they may develop an ad hoc committee to review the function of commissions and make suggestions for improvements. And this is supposed to trigger some of those suggestions. So I see this as a fairly, not a short-term thing designed for an October meeting, but a stimulus that may be a tool for the board into the future.
If I can just make a comment as well, it may be a matter of not necessarily writing a lot of new content, but identifying what information is appropriate for commissioner, like for the HRC. And I do provide a packet, but I think the idea, part of the idea is getting it to someone sooner when they're considering whether to join. But it could be a matter, for example, providing Chapter 2.38. And for the HRC, it would also be 2.58, providing, you know, information about the Brand Act. So it could be something like that rather than writing a lot of new content.
Correct, entirely so. Yeah, I, I, I believe that, I believe that the supervisors are a little out of focus with their commissions. And the goal here is to politely make that suggestion and to just trigger some of the existing questions, whether they're already written about or not. They may be, there may be great detail on them in the general plan, but they're not information that is in the head of each supervisor and transmitted to their commissioners. So I'm seeking a higher level of resolution and a better job of, of communicating- to be more effective, for the commissions to just be more effective. That's what's behind it. Let's see now, do I have hands still raised, Neil?
Just quickly, I think Carolyn, from my experience, it's one thing to say, you know, Neil, go to the website and read what you're involved with. It's nothing to say yes, and then having committed, sort of get something tangible in hand, even if it is reminding you to go to the website and these are the things, or these are the things you need to be aware of. And, you know, you don't get any of that. I mean, you really, so I, I think, I think we're, we're trying to do something that makes it a little bit more understood when you say yes, that this is what you're getting right now. And this is where your responsibilities would be for, for joining this, this group. And, you know, I, I just felt like, wow, like Barry said, it was luck. I mean, you know, I have an interest in, in history here in the community. But boy, I, I want to sit at your feet sometime, Carolyn, and learn more about some of the background and get education without dealing with policy, just understanding the scope of where we stand. And I think that's what's really hard for a new commissioner coming in, just understanding the scope of where you sit in this and where your responsibilities are. And I think that would be part of the onboarding process, that you would at least understand where you are in that process.
No, I, you know, I agree with pulling things together from, you know, pulling things together from other sources to create a booklet that would help people coming in who are new commissioners. I myself, the first time I served, had no idea for the entire first term that I served, what I was doing. I mean, I, I looked at the guy next to me, whatever he said, he, oh, okay, I'll go along with him. I just, you know, it was very, very difficult to, to sort of get your mind around the whole scope of it. But the other thing is that I, I think I'm hearing two, two things that we want to do. One is to educate the Board of Supervisors about the value of commissions and what they do. And the other is to look for a way to help incoming commissioners onboarding.
Correct, those are both correct.
Yes, but to, to help, to help people coming in. I was thinking that, you know, if we had, if we did have our own and to, you're handing somebody something written and expecting that to help them function when they sit down in a meeting. That, that can help, but it helps more if, if we as commissioners took time to set aside part of the meeting when we have a new commissioner and answer their questions and actually go through a document, if we get a pamphlet, go through it with them and say, this, this is what you need to know and answer their questions. And you'll find this confusing and, oh, don't worry about that yet, you know. That's a different thing than handing something to the Board of Supervisors. Counseling the Board of Supervisors about how to pay attention to their commissions is a very worthy goal, but it's a little bit different. That's what I was saying.
I think we can do, but I think both things need attention. And I'm trying to sort of hit both points at once. I would like to suggest, Carolyn, that something that you just said, you said you didn't know what you were doing until your first term was over. Let me go to Neil and say, hey, Neil, what's your term of service anyways? Do you know?
I think three, three years I'm on here. Is that right?
Uh, I don't know.
It's a four-year, it's a four-year appointment. I don't know the date, I don't recall the date you were appointed, but it's, we serve four years.
I would like to tell all of you that Supervisor Caput has never shared that with me and I have no idea of my own term of service. And if that reflects that I am not appropriately qualified to be chairman, so be it. But honestly, there we have one tidbit named by Carolyn, term of service. Show me somewhere where it tells us what term of service is. And that is my point, right there, is that there's nowhere I know where to go to see my term of service. And I would like to get a, see the supervisors hand out a packet to a candidate that includes your term of services for years or until a different supervisor changes your appointment. Yeah, Alberta, yes?
Yes, I was just going to make that remark about the, the term of service actually goes until the supervisor decides what it is.
Correct, that's right. Suzie Miriam was our former candidate. Her term of service was not up in terms of years, but it was up in terms of that a different supervisor was elected. And that supervisor chose to have a different commissioner. So we serve at the pleasure of our supervisors, all of us. My supervisor, there's going to be a new supervisor elected in November for my district. And I guess that my term of service will be dependent on that as well. So with that information being said, and before we move forward at all, we still, I would like to recognize the very patient Jean Brockelbank, who has been waiting, and I believe this agenda item is what brought her to the meeting in the first place. Thank you for being patient, Jean. I recognize you now.
Thank you so much. And, and it's been very interesting to hear this conversation because it, it proves to me how important it is that you act positively on the recommendation to forward to this, to the Board of Supervisors. Format is very important and your content is great, Mr. Pearlman, but it's, it's really important that, that this be done in slightly different format. And I had, I had originally been intrigued by this because the Parks and Recreation Commission is wholly inefficient and dysfunctional because nobody knows Rosenberg's Rules of Order. Nobody knows what their powers and duties are. Nobody knows what their bylaws say. And the new, new commissioners sit there for a year, like Carolyn, not knowing what's going on. So it's, I really hope that you will pass this. I will say that onboarding, excuse me, I'm with Carolyn. I don't like onboarding. I don't like incoming. What's, what's wrong with calling it new packet for new commissioners? And it's really important also in, in responding to something that Carolyn has said. It's important that people, candidates who fill out an application for a commission, know what their duties and responsibilities are, what their, excuse me, how much time they need to put into this. And they need to know this before they're appointed to the commission. It's too late, once they're on the commission, to say, oh, and by the way, here's everything you should know. Because they've already been appointed. And that's again, why I think it's, this proactive is very important. Excuse me a minute. Also, I'm familiar with County Code 2.38 that Carolyn brought up. And it's important to remember that 2.38 is a generic template. It doesn't have the stuff in it that you will have in this packet. It refers to doing that stuff, but it doesn't have it. And so I think in this particular case, it's important for commissioners to look at 2.38. But I think it's irrelevant in terms of the letter that you are getting ready to draft to the Board of Supervisors. Let's see, and Commissioner Pearlman, I think the Board of Supervisors will not form a committee. I think that the Board of Supervisors, once hearing from you, may direct staff, and we don't know which staff that would be, to generate the kind of new commissioner packet that you're talking about. But you're right, they will end up doing it. And it will have to be generic because every commission, every commission is different. And I think there's more than 24 commissions. And let's see, I, um, oh, one suggestion for your letter is that I would definitely add Rosenberg's Rules of Order. Because every commissioner, not just the chair and the...
Excuse me, do you mean Robert's Rules of Order?
Not, no, it's the county.
No, excuse me.
County changed it to Rosenberg's Rules of Order.
As of when?
Instead of Robert's Rules of Order. And they did this a few years ago.
It happened three minutes, just so you're aware.
Pardon?
I'm sorry?
But I'm sorry, it has been three minutes, just, I didn't know.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, yeah. So, so I really encourage you to do this. And I'm, as an aside, I think I'll send to Annie Murphy. I felt so strongly about this in terms of helping the Parks and Recreation Commission, which fumbles every meeting, that I generated, using your template, the same kind of letter and introductory, hoping that we could get that on the Parks and Recreation Commission agenda. But it wasn't accepted by the director, unfortunately.
Okay, I, I'm going to need to close down the conversation now in order to be able to move forward.
Okay, one last thing, one last thing.
I'll give you 30 seconds.
The letter that is up on my screen says the items below indicate particular areas that need attention, but may not be a complete, it's an incomplete sentence. So if that one goes, I'm sure that you would be editing that. But I will send that to Annie and, and hope that, that it will help you generate your email. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, Jean. I appreciate your attention to this and I appreciate your coming to several meetings in order to share with us. So at this point, I believe that we have a modified motion on the floor. Is that correct?
I'm going to withdraw that first motion in, in light of a different way to state it.
Okay, Neil, I give you the floor. Present, please.
Well, okay, just my, my question here is we seem to have wanted to add some other items onto this. So are, are we now going to accept this, you know, this outline accepted as it is and not make any changes to it, just reformat it mechanically only? Or are we going to add some of these, a couple of changes like, you know, Rosenberg's Rule of Orders? Are we going to leave that alone? That's just a question I'm asking.
Well, I did want to clarify that. I don't believe the Rules of Order should be specified in this document.
Correct.
The bylaws for the Historic Resources Commission specify that Sturgis' Rules of Orders are followed. So I believe that different commissions may follow different Rules of Order.
Okay, all right. That's correct. I, I have a document from 1994 from Supervisor Gary Patton, authorizing Sturgis and Roberts for commissions. And I'm not sure if that's across the board, but in, in the bylaws of the Historic Resources Commission, we do mention Sturgis and Roberts. So I think that it would be best to leave the specifics of that out of this. This is only a document to stimulate them to start thinking about it. I do not expect this to cover every detail that needs to be reconsidered.
Yeah, fair enough. Okay.
So I believe, to clarify for you, Neil, that we're talking about leaving the list alone, just sort of dressing it up and polishing it up before it goes out to be a better format.
Okay, and, and before I make the motion, I have an idea for what we call this. How about introduction packet for new commissioners?
Excellent.
Okay, all right.
Why don't you put that in the motion?
Okay, I move that we adopt the content of this introduction packet for new commissioners that will subsequently be reformatted prior to it being sent to the commissioners for their review.
Very good. Do we have a second to the motion?
I'm sorry, can I just make a clarification? For new commissioners, I believe you might want to state prospective new commissioners because I believe the intention was that they be provided a packet before they accept the position. Is that correct?
That's correct. Neil, do you accept Annie's modification?
Thank you.
Okay, let's add Annie's modification. Okay, do we have a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Alberta. Okay, I believe we've had an adequate discussion. I believe we have a modified and tailored motion on the floor. May we call for a vote, please? Commissioner Orlando?
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner Swift?
Aye.
Commissioner Woods?
Aye.
Commissioner Pearlman, aye. Thank you very much.
Was there a second on that motion?
Uh, yes, by Alberta.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you very much. I appreciate the support of the commission on this project. I believe that this is going to be a good tool. And, uh, I'd like to recognize the hard work that Commissioner Woods has put in, considering that he's really, what is this, the third or this is the fourth meeting? Yes, Neil? It's your first year. You really, thank you so much for all the hard work.
I'm having so much fun, I'm losing track of time.
Ain't that wonderful? Okay, so friends, at this point, we have completed items through the agenda, Item 8B. We're now going to go to Item 8C. But before we do, I would like to call a five-minute intermission to the meeting. Okay, if that's acceptable to everybody? I'd like to have a five-minute intermission and we will return to Item 8C. It is currently eight, 11:29. How about we make it six minutes, we come back at 11:35?
Perfect.
I won't be back, but thank you so much.
Thank you for attending and please feel free to come to any of our future meetings.
Thank you.
We really enjoyed your input. Commissioners, I suggest that you mute your microphones. We all come back at 11:35. See you then. Meeting temporarily adjourned. Okay, we have eleven thirty-five. Anybody else back yet? Hi, Annie.
Hi, Gary. I did want to mention for eight C, that I'm coming up, that I do have some information to report back that was requested. I guess that's for Linda too, because she'll be, I think she'll be reviewing this item.
That's excellent, great. Um, should I call on Linda first or call on you first?
So I'm here.
Good.
Okay, so yeah, if you want to call on, on Linda first, that's fine, and then maybe you could just, when you get to that point, I can report back on the, um, the amount budget of prior years, updating inventory. And I also just wanted to put back on the line items for the historic preservation consultant and training.
Good, good. Okay, so Linda, when you're, um, when you get to that item in the goals, you'll indicate that Annie has the input and then Annie, you can just pick up on it.
I don't think we're gonna get to that, because that was added as a new goal, so that's toward the end of the packet. Hang on just a second.
Okay, that, that's.
Okay, well, I, um, if you look at item eight C, maybe that's not how you intended it to read, but it does eight C.
You know, you know what? Right, you know what I'm gonna do? I am going to, yes. I will, I, I'm moving it into my first group. And so that will be, okay, don't worry about it. I'll include it in the first group of action items.
Okay, yeah, I know there's some.
I'm glad you brought it up.
Okay, I know there's some overlap, so it's hard to kind of tease them all apart, but.
Well, I, I think, I think with a little bit of skill, we can do this in an hour and be finished. So let's see how we are. Uh, how about others? Who's back? Neil, I see you. Do we have Alberta or Carolyn yet?
I'm here.
Hi.
This is Carolyn.
I'm Barry. I don't see your image. I just see your.
Uh, yeah, I haven't done a thing. Uh, how's that?
Uh, still just.
I, um, I'm wondering what the.
We need to click on this plus three, let's see.
Sometimes it turns.
Oh, hold on. Hang on, somebody turned my camera off.
Yeah, I got mine turned off too.
There, how's that? Do you see me now?
Um, no.
You don't see me now.
You've disappeared into the ethers.
Okay, I haven't done anything myself.
You're listed on the far right as a guest.
Are, are you there, Natisha?
Carolyn, if there's one thing I can assure you, I'm not on the far right.
Are you there, Natisha? Can you assist Barry?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
Um, you might just need to turn your camera back on, so if there's a line through the camera symbol.
There was before, but there is not now. My camera is, my camera is, okay, now it's turned off. And now it's turned on.
There you go. Now we can see you. Oh wait, no, it's, you know, it's doing that thing it did when you first entered, when it turned black.
Okay, let me.
What was the, remember you did that trick where you clicked a button and it, there we go. Yeah, that's it. And Carolyn, um, yeah, Commissioner Swift in Orlando, if you can just click your camera icon on Teams, we'll be able to see your video again. Sorry about that. Looks like I might have turned off everyone's camera on that. Great, and Alberta.
Carolyn, where's Alberta?
Yep. Alberta, if you're there, you're muted and your camera is off, so if you see the microphone icon and the camera icon, you can just click on that and that should turn them back on. I will check in with her via phone, just to make sure she's good to go when we get, are we getting started at, right now or in five minutes?
Uh, well, I would prefer not to wait five more minutes, but.
I'll reach out to her right now then.
Okay, I, yeah, I'd like to start the meeting up and she can jump back in. Very good. Okay, so I'd like to call the meeting back to order at eleven forty and thank you for your indulgence for our extra five minutes. Sorry that I did not get us going at fi- at eleven thirty-five. So we're calling back to order the meeting of the Historic Resources Commission on July twenty-ninth at eleven forty AM. We're going to continue our agenda with item eight C. And I would like to call upon our vice chair, Linda Phillips, to present item eight C.
Okay, this is, uh, the agenda item for tracking our goals. And the, in Annie, I did know you had, um,
Oh, Linda, we're losing you.
But, uh, okay, so just, just to touch base on the framework for this action item, that establishing a tracking goals, uh, format and system was approved by the commissioners on, at our April fifth, twenty twenty-one meeting. And the objective is to know when a new goal is added and categorized, to follow the progress of each goal through staff actions, commissioner consensus and board vote, and to acknowledge when a goal is accomplished. And so far, we have completed, uh, defining what a goal is. The completion categories used, which is short-term, one to three years, long-term, three to five years, perpetual, no estimated completion date. And, uh, so using the newly defined goal terminology, categories and documented information to create new goal listings for determining which goals merit tracking. So for, uh, each agenda, as we look at these, I wanted to use the format of first going, over the goal action items to see which ones the progress and if any have been completed. And then second, we'll go to, uh, goals that we have not evaluated to determine if they fit our definition and if there's any discussion on, uh, how we want to accomplish them. So, uh, so our goal action items that we have is, on goal number one, there were two goals or two action items. One taken at the January nineteenth meeting was to move the goal of scheduling Joel Michelak to do a presentation, which was completed. And on March twenty-eighth, Joe Michelak did make a presentation of, uh, how to research a historic structure. So that action item is marked as completed. So this, uh, goal number one is to create a training opportunity list. So is there any other action items or any discussion of any training ideas that we want to add? And I know Annie, so Annie, um, I know that, uh, or I should say that, has there been any, um, classes or conference, uh, sessions that are coming up that we might be interested in?
Um, and I could just clarify too, this is in your packet. Um, the goal number one is, agenda item eight, eight E in the previous packet, so.
Yes.
You do have that, the case study, have that available. Um, so, um, of course, the, um, historic preservation conference has, has come and gone and I did send the commission the information, um, to be able to access the webinars online. So that, that is already happening, but I just wanted to mention, please do take advantage of that opportunity. There are a lot of really great, um, sessions, um, in that conference. I'm not aware of any training opportunities, um, to date. I could certainly, take a look and report back at the next meeting.
Okay, now, when we do, uh, complete a webinar, do, should we be informing you or just keep track of it ourselves?
Well, uh, I believe that Neil may have had the idea of commissioners reporting back at what they learned from a particular webinar, so if your commission, you know, wanted to, make that an agenda item, um, you know, to report back on any webinars they anticipated of what they learned from, and they could certainly do that. I do, I do track that for the annual ports to, um, make sure that each commissioner has completed the training required as a certified local government. So, um, I also, you know, would appreciate that information from each commissioner.
Uh, Neil, you have a question?
So please correct me if, uh, this is the wrong place to ask this. I'm actually, even though what's up on my screen is goal five, we're, we, I thought we started out by talking about goal one, which was create a training opportunity list. Are we, were you asking, were we gonna, uh, were there other items to consider for training in the future? Is that what our discussion is right now? Are we talking about goal five?
No, we're still on goal one.
Okay, so here's my question for goal one. I know that in the document that Annie, uh, put together, there is, uh, you know, a lot of different places that talk about, you know, applying for funding or writing for grants. And, uh, as a commissioner, I have no idea what that would mean for our commission and, and if that is something that, that we would do? Or is that something that staff does through the county? But, uh, again, that's an area that, uh, just, uh, seems integral here as, as far as moving forward, but I don't know wh- where that falls.
Um, well, I can answer that, because that topic has come up on the agenda. We have discussed it somewhat and that's been the question, because though I think the commission has expressed a willingness to do, to be a subcommittee to do some research of grants, we cannot do it on our own. There's too much information the planning department would have to supply. And the question is, do they have the staff and funding to put toward helping us write grants? Or, and that's where part of the budget question came up, can, is, do we have budget to be able to hire a historic consultant to help us write a grant? So I think we will be getting into that question some more.
All right, fair enough.
Um, so at this point, what I'm doing is going through, uh, some of the agenda items from previous meetings to state progress and so while we are on that goal, to see if there is any other questions or comments that would maybe lead to a new action item for that specific goal. So for this one, it would be the action item to have staff report back at the next meeting if any training act, uh, opportunities have arisen or if any commissioners have any ideas of having a special speaker or, um, you know, uh, some other type of training. So the next goal is number three A. And that was demolition and partial demolition. And at the last meeting, at our May second meeting, the board agreed that, um, that this should be split actually into two goals, three A demolition and three B partial demolition. So that's been done. So there's, uh, so you have a separate spreadsheet now that just is three B. Uh, the action item was, uh, so to add two new demolition code amendments have been accept, uh, suggested for board approval. Um, and the amendments would come to our commission by the end of twenty twenty-two for a vote. And then, uh, the two code amendments are listed, number one and number two. And some of this was mentioned in the sustainability about having, about dealing with, um, with, uh, uh, resources with structures older than fifty years. Um, and that if there's any, uh, interest in doing a demolition, that they, they be, uh, that they require permit and be reviewed and if it meets, a considered historic, uh, criteria that a DPR be written. So, um, Annie? Is, is, so what I have is that, uh, that there's, that the demolition code amendments will be put together sometime by the end of the year. So I'm assuming that's still on track?
Yes, right. So that one, as you mentioned, would be, um, requiring a permit for demolition of structures fifty years old or older evaluation. And another ordinance coming would be the, um, incentive-based approach to, um, allow additional uses beyond what is allowed, otherwise allowed in the zone district to, um, act as an incentive for maintenance and restoration of a historic structure.
Okay, so when those, when those are ready, they'll be put on the agenda for us to review?
Yes.
Okay, is there any questions on, on, uh, this? On the action items on this goal? Okay, and then on three B, the partial demolition by neglect. We, the board wanted to change the designation. That the board suggested creation of a watch list focusing of structures that fall under this criteria. And, ooh, sorry, I seem to have cut that off. So, uh, the action item is for staff to create a template similar to our watch list, but tailored to structures falling into disrepair due to neglect. So, um, Annie?
Um, I could provide that to your commission at the next meeting.
Okay.
And I will also fix the formatting on that. That could have been by error in, in formatting for the letters. So I will check that as well.
Thank you.
So is there any question on this goal? Okay. Um, the next one. So at the last meeting, basically the commission discussed the watch list and that the board agreed that the watch list, we continue to be updated as potential properties are identified. So there is no other action other than that is a goal. I don't know if there's any more specifics that the commission would like to add to this. I know there's been some discussion of the template. Um, and possibly trying to set a goal of, you know, X number of properties reviewed annually or X number of properties to try and get added to this list? Or should we just continue this and review it as desired?
Review as desired, I suggest.
Okay. And then the next two are two new ones. Uh, 13 is, um, ah, this, this I think is following along those lines. Uh, this goal was to have each commissioner review and update if needed, five inventory DPR forms within their district per year. Um, and so this has now been designated as goal number 13. Is there any action or comment that anyone has on this, this goal?
So how, what does this look like? How, how do we manage this within our commission?
Well, um, each commit, each commissioner should have gotten the list of all the DPRs, the historic resources within their district.
Got it.
So I imagine just start looking at, pick out five and review them. Um, what I was told is you don't go talk to the people, the owners, but poss, but take pictures so that there can, you know, photographically see if there's been any changes, do some reviewing. Carolyn, you probably know a little bit better than I do. I imagine there's some research to see if owners have changed. I know in my district, perhaps.
I think you can do that online.
Frozen.
Oops.
Linda, you're offline.
I'm with you, Neil. Like, I'm, Linda is hesitating.
Um,
Now you're back.
There you go.
Okay. So, um, basically you pick out five DPRs that you want to review. You do what you can online in the uh, county records department to see if there's been a change of ownership. Uh, take pictures so that you can, there's a physical comparison. And notate any changes on the, uh, on a copy of the DPR form.
Your, your service is dropping out, Linda.
Where do you find this goal?
Um, it is in your packet, um, in numerical order. So it's, it's goal number 13. So it's towards the end of this item.
Linda might have to go out and reestablish a connection.
I can try and do that.
I can hear you now.
Um, so we're looking at goals 13 and 14. Those are the two newest goals.
Carolyn, it looks like they're on a spreadsheet, a black and white spreadsheet.
They're those last two sheets of the group that was sent to us for the July 11th meeting.
Yeah, okay. It's at the end.
Yes, at the end.
Okay.
New, two new pages.
So Linda, my question would be, and broadly for the commission, is that our, is our commissioners, I don't want to use the word required, as part of being a commissioner, and we take this on a goal that we are all in agreement that we're going to parse out our lists that we have and then peck away at that to update this? I mean, is that a part of a responsibility that, that we would have? I'm not shirking from that. I'm just asking the question that if there's a
I believe, I believe we agreed to that last, uh, last year on January 19th. We established item number 13 as a new goal, adding on to our tracking goals. Is that correct, Linda?
Right, so that, so yes, our responsibility is, uh, one of our responsibilities is to look at the historic resources within our own district. And see, to one, update information about do kind of a physical look. And, um, you know, take a picture to
You're breaking up again.
Right.
Yeah.
Linda? I'm wondering, Linda, maybe we wouldn't be able to see, but I'm wondering if maybe you should call into the meeting instead?
Or cut the video feed and just see if it does your audio.
Right, that's a good idea. That's a good idea. Yeah, you just turn off your camera.
You'll use less bandwidth.
That's a good suggestion, Neil.
Is she gonna like that frozen expression on her face?
So, um, we, it's, it is one of our responsibilities to review and to properties are being kept up to date.
Okay.
Care of maintained to update any information in case they've been sold. Uh, who, there's, um, and can, what other information you keep for?
Is, is this something? Uh, we discussed it before and my memory isn't what it is. Is, is doing this kind of update something that we're allowed to do?
Well, yeah, I, let me, I could just comment. I think one, I think one of the purposes of this is to document the condition of a property, which is pretty easy by taking photographs. And that could also support the need for an ordinance to prevent demolition by neglect. So I think that's part of it that would be important information. And then in terms of updating this, you know, information accuracy, one of the things the commission discussed was if, if you're aware of there being inaccuracies to, you know, document those, but I don't. You know, there, there is the, the question that's come up before where certainly documenting like correct owner information and that sort of thing is something that can be done when it's, when it's sort of more detailed to support research than at that point if we're trying to update a form, it may, you know, require consultant input. So,
Yeah, I was thinking that we might end up including information that would be misleading. You know, if it was inaccurate. So.
What, what kind of information were you thinking of? That would be misleading or accurate?
Well, you know, in a DPR, there's a historical description. There's a history of the building. And, you know, who built it? Who was the architect? Who, uh, who lived there first and what their role was in history? And a lot of them are really wrong. I mean, a lot of the ones in the inventory are really, really wrong or short and incomplete. And so if we attempted to correct that, uh, we might end up creating more of a problem.
Yeah, you know, I'm, I'm just wondering, a suggestion that maybe this item could come back to the commission for, for future discussion in terms of what exactly, what type of information we exactly, you know, want to see in terms of being updated. I certainly think photos would be very useful.
Wouldn't it be, be helpful even if, say each commissioner went out once a year and verified that the structure was still standing and provided a current photo?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Annie, I just wanted to interrupt for a moment to let everyone know that Commissioner Orlando is going to step away right now. So just wanted to notify everyone.
Okay, thank you.
Bye, Alberta. Thank you.
Bye, Alberta.
Thank you, Alberta.
So do you want to make an action item for our next meeting that on goal number 13, there's a discussion of what specific information we would like to have recorded?
Yes, I, I think that's a good idea, Linda. And Annie, may I ask you if you would include a blank DPR with our next packet? So that we can all refresh on what one looks like?
Yes, also, if you, if we could each look at our surveys, because that, that, what the survey is really is a collection of DPRs. You could see what kind of information consultants have collected. Because a lot of them, a lot of the early survey DPRs were done, they're, they were called like a windshield survey. Somebody drove around a neighborhood, that's an old building, that's an old building. And they kind of guessed, that looks like 1920 and that looks like 1930. And, and that's all the information that's on the form. Others are when a consultant was hired and the work is very professional. And so those are mixed together. Is that right, Annie?
Yeah, but I have to clarify, the expectation is not that the commissioners would write a new DPR form with research to all the history. That's not the expectation. I think the expectation is photos and maybe updating some strategic information that can be easily like verified and documented. But, but the commission will sort of discuss that at the next meeting, but.
Yeah, it would be, I think it would be really daunting uh, amount of work for the commission, individual commissioners to go and do five buildings. That would be a whole lot of work. But to go out and say, oh, that one's still there and take a picture, that's not so hard.
Or, or observing significant changes where there's incongruity in additions or a design or something that's being attempted.
Yeah. It's just a matter of flagging it. Looks like the front porch is gone or, you know.
Right. So if I were to state this, I would say that as we look at the goal that we established at our January 19th meeting to review and update five inventory DPRs, I believe we're going to revisit that a concept at our next meeting? Is that accurate?
Yes.
Well, I'm not sure about concept. Because I think we, we, we
Detail of it, not the concept.
We're gonna define what you mean by update.
Correct. That's what needs to be defined. What a review and update really means.
Linda, if you're talking, we can't hear you.
Okay.
I'll just interject again, as a new commissioner, this would be the puzzling aspect of the job description heretofore not understanding particularly what the responsibility might be. So I think it does beg to just outline this a little better as to what we might think we do on a cursory level, you know, just to see what, what's going on in our district.
That, that's, that's well said. Um, and clearly it needs, um, more clarification. So why don't we take this one item of goal 13 and revisit it at the next meeting?
Agree.
Okay. Linda, do we have you?
I think Linda's got tech problems.
Yes, I don't know if we're still there. You might want to try calling into the meeting. At this point, the, the call in information is in the invite for the meeting. And Natasha can probably also assist you.
You know, she might sign on again because sometimes providers, you know, they, they choke down. They see you've been online for a long time. And so they bounce you around. So you have to sign in again.
Well, considering that item eight, C and eight D are being presented by Linda and we don't have her at the moment. I would like to try to use our time effectively. So if we may temporarily defer until Linda's return, how, how would we handle, best handle this? And Annie, any suggestion?
You might want to make a motion to do that.
Very good. Uh, do I have a motion to defer item eight until Linda's return?
I'll move that.
Okay, Carolyn, thank you.
Actually, eight C and D, you want to say?
Yes, eight C and D. Yeah, okay. Um, so do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Quick vote. Linda's back. Is Linda back?
Oh, you're muted, Linda.
Okay, am I here?
You are.
Okay. So, um,
Okay, may I excuse me for a minute, Linda? We were trying to get something done while you weren't, weren't handy. So let us abandon the, the motion on the floor because Linda has returned to continue with item eight C.
Yes, so I just wanted to clarify something because it sounded like you were making a motion to, um, make goal number 13 an agenda item.
Well, to revisit it at the next meeting for sure.
Okay, so at every meeting, I will be going over goal action items. So that will be something. So that will be something done. So I already have on here an action item on goal number three B. And, uh, and now act, uh, goal number 13. So I have two action items already on the, on goals. So I didn't know if you were doing something in addition to that.
That's proper, Linda. That, thank you for the clarification. I think that's, um, uh, more than adequate to fit it into the next agenda.
Okay.
Are you going to continue with number 14 at this time or not?
Yes. Yes. So goal number 14, this was another new agenda, uh, goal item asked to be added. And this was a discussion on, uh, budget assigned to the Historic Resources Commission. And, um, since we had the meeting in May, there was some more clarification on how this, this money, this budget is actually handed, handled. So Barry, would you like to continue on or would you like?
Yeah, sure.
Would you mind, I'm sorry, would you mind if I just, uh, because I did have some information to report back on?
That's very, that's very helpful, Annie. Continue on please.
So yeah, so I did want to clarify that the Historic Resources Commission does not have a separate budget. Um, and I, I think I didn't make that clear at the last meeting. So there's no HRC budget. But there are currently two line items in the, um, Community Development and Infrastructure Budget, previously the Planning Department Budget, that support the commission and staff's work related to historic resources. So the current fiscal year, um, for the Community Development Infrastructure Department, there is a line item for $1,200 for training for the HRC. And there was a line item for $1,500 for the county's Historic Resources Consultant. These are the same amounts, um, were allocated in the last fiscal year and numerous years prior to that. And I can certainly keep your commission informed throughout the year regarding the amount remaining for these two items, if it would be helpful. And of course, I think your commission has discussed also approaching the board for additional funding for, for, to support the work that commission would certainly be an option, but there is no separate HRC budget.
Correct. As I understand it, we're included in the two line items. Annie, are those amounts, the 1,500 for the ARG and the 1,200 for training? Are those amounts remaining the same for the new incoming fiscal year?
Yes. So yeah, for the 2022, 2023, um, that's that same amount of $1,200 for training and $1,500 for the consultant.
Very good. I will note that we did not spend any of that $1,500, therefore making it probably a reasonable amount to maintain and that the 1,200 was adequate for training. It is possible that we would go over in the next fiscal year, but I think that's reasonable. I would comment that I think both amounts are reasonable to do what needs to be done. I do think that all commissions should be empowered with some funding, but that's down the road. Let's, uh, let's power up the commissions with earlier work we've talked about and then worry about getting more money.
And yes, and the commission did also ask me to report back on the amount budgeted in prior years for updating historic resources inventory. So I do have that information if you want to maybe share that at this time.
You, you have that right now?
Yes.
Uh, would you like to share any of that at this time?
Sure. So, um, so I went back and looked at what I believe was the most recent survey in 2003. The Board of Supervisors allocated the use of $15,000 in redevelopment agency funding to, um, survey properties in Live Oak. And so they directed the planning department to send out a request for proposals. So the Historic Commission recommended, uh, circa historic property development to perform the Live Oak Historic Properties Study. Um, and the commission, I think Carolyn was involved with that. Spent a lot of time and shared their expertise, um, along with other volunteers who were familiar with Live Oak history to, um, prepare this survey. Um, so it is unfortunate that RDA funding is no longer available to the county. I also just wanted to note that since 2003, the cost for doing surveys and preparing DPRs has increased significantly. I spoke with ARG just to get a ballpark figure of what they charge for their DPRs. They are, you know, very often very lengthy and very thoroughly researched. But they do, they estimated a figure of eight to $9,000 for one DPR form. So, um, that money does go quickly. So that's the information I have on that.
They, 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 they say it's $8,000 for one DPR form?
Yes, yes. I, I haven't checked with other consultants, so I have a feeling it may be somewhat less. And there's the one that they prepared for the Meriman site was, was the one they were thinking of, which was very thoroughly researched. So others may not be as long, but I would, I would think probably, you know, at least $5,000 for one survey, I would think.
Wow. They don't, they, there's not, there's not a consultant that will do them as a batch, you know?
Well, I haven't, I haven't looked into that. This is sort of an estimate right now. I haven't, you know, I haven't, but I, but I just, I think the main point is making is each, each survey is, is a financial expense in itself.
You know, I have another question. Can I ask it? It's related to, uh, doing, getting the inventory. Every year we want to ask the Board of Supervisors for funding and every year we miss the meeting where the, where the board discusses its budget. Where, you know, we miss our chance to actually present, um, a request to the Board of Supervisors for funding. Is there a way we could get, um, like a, like a little alarm clock or something that goes off in the right month? That, so that, so that we know at the right meeting, we need to make this request so that they pay attention to our desire to get funding for the inventory?
Yeah, I, I would recommend that in the fall, like if the, if the commission wants to approach the board this year for funding for any particular items, I'd recommend discussing that in October and probably acting on it in the fall.
Okay, so that's coming up. Yeah. Okay. So we have to remember October. Okay.
Well, uh, if I may comment, we are, um, actually sending our document uh, in a timely way with our suggestion for the prospective candidates for commissioners. And I believe that the board will be taking on a portion of their meeting regarding commissions in October. So, um, uh, perhaps we should, uh, revisit this in our October meeting, which is before the supervisors' meeting and, um, put an agenda item to consider, uh, budgetary recommendation? Do I have any support here from any commissioners that want to chime in?
Well, I support that. I think even, well, we, we can't do it any sooner. I think our next meeting is October, right?
Correct. That is, that is currently the plan.
At our next meeting, we, 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 we should talk strategy for catching the Board of Supervisors' attention and directing it towards funding the inventory.
And I could do some research between now and then too about, you know, ideas for the best way to approach the board as well.
Oh, that would help.
If we can generate a letter to the board from our next meeting that they would receive, um, in early October, uh, it potentially could catch them in time for, uh, for budget considerations. So, um, we've got an action item on number 13 for the next meeting, which is to generate a board letter, um, regarding funding the DPRs. Is that correct?
So what I have is the action item is to discuss, um, to discuss the DPR form and what specific information we should be documenting on it. And Annie will supply a blank one to review and to have the words review and update defined for use on the DPR form. So you want to, you would like to include funding?
I think, if I can just interject, I think that might be a different item and it may be related to another goal, but, but goal 13 is about the existing DPR forms. And I think in terms of the survey, if, if the commission wants to approach the board to recommend that they, you know, seek funding for a survey, that would be surveying of generally new properties. So I think that will probably be, um, a different, a different item. And I, I also know the commission has discussed, you know, potentially approaching the board about funds to support like incidental expenses of the commission. So, so, um, you know, I, I don't know how the commission wants to word the, the next agenda item, but I think it might be its own agenda item in terms of seek funding from the board potentially.
So a separate item on its own focused on funding of doing commission business?
That would be correct.
Well, commission business or potentially a survey help, you know, um, approach the board for funding for rent commission business, potentially, you know, updating the inventory or other, you know, other funding needs maybe.
No, exactly where we would discuss strategy and, and what, and be more specific on how the funding would be used.
Correct. And I, I think that, um, what we're looking for is to generate, um, a request from the board to add funding to next year's budget for several different goals of the HRC. Bundling them all under funding, would that be right?
Yes, that sounds right.
Okay, so item, the first item to fund would be, um, uh, an update of the survey?
Right, right. That could certainly be discussed.
Okay. And then the other item would be a request for, um, some small oper- miscellaneous operational funds for the HRC. Is that right? Were we, is that what we were discussing?
It might be for educational outreach too, right? Just have some.
I think specifically that, that would be it. And, um, uh, a combination of educational outreach and, um, miscellaneous expenses such as a trade show booth or a fair booth, things like that. Any feedback from commissioners? Okay, how do we want to word this so we can move on?
How do we want to word it? So we said?
Yeah, how do we want to, how do we want to word this so we can put this to rest?
Um, let's see. Consider strategy to approach the board for, um, to add funding to next year's budget or to support the goals of HRC, um, such as updating historic resources inventory and requesting miscellaneous reimbursement for miscellaneous operational expenses of HRC, including educational outreach.
That sounds good. That sounds very inclusive and comprehensive. Linda, are you okay with this?
Yes, yes. And I will, I will make that motion.
Very good. Do we have a second?
Sorry, second?
Okay, thank you Neil.
I was muted.
So was I.
Um, I think that we can consider our discussion rather than complete. Let's, uh, call for a vote please. Okay, so on the motion at hand, with Commissioner Orlando having retired for the day, I'll begin with Commissioner Phillips. How do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Swift?
Yes.
Commissioner Woods?
Yes.
And Commissioner Pearlman, yes? Okay, so we've taken action on the goals and, um, I believe that covers the first part, item eight C, I believe. Are we ready to move on to item eight D, which is goal five, the Mills Act?
Oh, Linda, you're muted.
Thank you.
Ahah.
So we will pick up at the next goal we have to evaluate, which is goal number five, the Mills Act. And, um, you can see that we started way back in 2017 discussing this. And, um, I believe Annie had a, uh, a chart of a slide or something about the Mills Act?
Yeah, let's see. Okay, so, um, so yeah, I know some commissioners may not be familiar with the Mills Act. And there is a policy basis in our general plan. This is an existing strategy which says consider, consider adoption of the Mills Act to grant local property tax subsidies to recognize historic structures to encourage rehabilitation. So it is in there to consider this. So what the Mills Act does is it provides financial incentive for a property owner to maintain or restore historic property. It's a contract between a local government and the property owner. In exchange for reduced property taxes, the owner agrees to maintain or restore the property. The contracts run for a minimum of 10 years. The local government, um, administers the program and contracts, reviews applications and performs inspections of the properties. And we can state what maintenance or rehabilitation is required for each contract. The local government can limit the number of contracts or, uh, limit the property values that would be eligible for contracts. And so in terms of challenges and benefits for the county, obviously the primary benefit is to help preserve historic properties. I think challenges with, uh, getting the board to adopt this in the past and probably currently as well is that it does reduce the property taxes and the amount of revenue coming into the county. And then it does require, um, quite a bit of staff time to administer and develop the program. So those are, that's kind of a quick, quick overview.
Annie, I'd like to ask you a couple of questions here. Looking at the, uh, goal sheet for goal number five, it looks to me as though the supervisors have twice, um, uh, how could I say, disconsidered the Mills Act? Uh, do we have any idea of what the current attitude is of the supervisors towards this?
Um, you know, I think that I don't know that they've been formally approached about it in recent years. So I certainly think, you know, if the commission wanted to approach board, one way to do it would be for an individual commissioner to approach their, you know, the, the supervisor that appointed them to see if there's any interest in, in the Mills Act and getting some support there. You know, I think it is always challenging when there is, you know, the reduced revenue coming into the county. But, um, but I don't, I don't think they've been formally approached, um, regarding this recently.
May I, may I suggest that, uh, the Mills Act definitely May I, may I suggest that, uh, the Mills Act definitely has a financial implication on the county budget. Okay. It definitely will influence county revenues and taxes and property taxes. Now that means that right now, let's recognize that we are currently at the beginning of fiscal year 2223. And that beginning like in September, the board begins to consider and knocks off line items or the budget for 2324 that goes into effect one year from now in July of 23. So if we're going to suggest something that has a financial implication on the county, we need to give, we need to work long and ahead. This may be something that would go into place two years later than it was even voted in. Um, just under, with some superficial understanding of how the money works in the county funding. So just for information, there will be a delay even when we, um, get this supported and even when voted into the county budget, it will still be delayed by a certain amount of time, which will be needed to roll it into the numbers. So how do we want to go from here? Do we want to, um, approach individual supervisors first? And get some sense before we put more commission time into this? That might be a good idea. If we were to come back at our October meeting with several of us having approached our supervisors on their feelings towards the Mills Act, and we could each report what the supervisors sense for it or attitude towards it was, we could determine how much effort to put into it from that point forward. Does that make sense?
May I ask you a question?
Yes, Neil.
So the Mills Act, let's say I'm the owner of the Bayview Hotel. And I want to take advantage of the Mills Act for the Bayview Hotel. It, I, the, the county is the arbitrator as to whether I can take advantage of the Mills Act. Is that the mechanism?
Yes, the county would develop criteria for applying for this. The property owner would enter into a contract with the county and it would specify, you know, what, what we expected of them for these reduced property taxes. And, um, then there would be some sort of, you know, process for inspections to verify that they were complying with the terms of the contract. And then they would get a reduction in their property taxes.
So is the going to the fear, which drives so many people, is the fear here by the supervisors that everyone that had a building 50 years or older wouldn't suddenly want to use the Mills Act to rehab their property? I'm being facetious here, but is that the fear that it becomes wildly popular? And then it affects the, the tax base? It seems like, I mean, it seems like, I mean, would this be hundreds of structures, individuals wanting to take advantage of this? I, I just don't have a sense of scale of this type of thing.
Right. Um, yeah, just to clarify, it would, it would only apply to properties that are designated historic resources. So.
Thank you. Okay. So move that out of the way.
Somewhere around 250, I forget the exact number, but, um, but the county could limit the number, like they could say, we only do 10 contracts a year or something. So the county could limit it that way. But I also do think, you know, just thinking about the various initiatives the commission is considering, it may be worthwhile to prioritize. I mean, you could go to the board about this now, but it may also be worth prioritizing like, like in one year asking for updating the inventory and the Mills Act. It might be a lot. So it might also be, and I think Linda had structured it that way too, but it might sort of be like thinking about the timeframe for various goals, which some of them might be more longer term. Or so anyway, that's just an idea to throw out there that you may not want to overwhelm the board with, with so many requests. It's too much. So.
Well, I, overwhelming, I guess my point is that with historic buildings, you know, every year a historic building is not protected, it's being, it's begun to be demolished. And so if the county and part of the whole building department, everything per the document that we reviewed earlier, that this becomes more of a commitment within the county to shepherd a, a way to maintain some of our historic, uh, buildings, I don't see it as overwhelming. I see it as good policy that could be adopted. And certainly there would be conditions, uh, apparently because the fear is that too many people apparently will want to avail themselves of this opportunity. I, I just, it, it, it's hard for me to think that it would be such an economic impact, even if a historic building, you know, that 50 people took advantage of it. We should be so glad that they want to, uh, do this within our community.
Neil, I think, uh, I think the impact is something that floats down on many levels. Because if there were 50 properties, that I believe it would require the planning department to oversee each of those 50, um, permits and properties. So, um, I think that the implementation of the Mills Act might even be something that is phased in.
Understand. Okay.
I, I think that it's, I think it's an entire mentality that goes along with this, which is the mentality of preservation. And, um, maybe our group of supervisors needs to be brought up to speed or oriented that this is such a high priority to our commission. That they would, um, uh, empathize and support us in that and phase it in. So.
And, and I get it that this could be a tool that we, you know, like you said, it will take a process, but at least we find another tool to move forward with owners of historic properties, that can help them. And, and, you know, like Annie says, it may only be X amount a year based upon what the workload, the planning commission can handle and all that, you know, all that sort of thing. So I get that, you know, but it seems like we should really explore that this is an option here for people.
Ab- absolutely. And, um, your predecessor, um, Commissioner Miriam was the person who, uh, from her own work as a planner, she recognized that the, the Mills Act could be a great tool to really help our commission and, um, enhance the county. Essentially, the bottom line is enhance the county. But how exactly we get our supervisors on board with this? Maybe it starts with something that was suggested a few minutes ago. Maybe each of us should individually contact our own supervisor and refresh them and share with them that this is an important issue that the board is continuing to visit.
Carolyn's dying to say something.
Go ahead, Carolyn. Please do.
I feel like this has become a dialogue with Barry. It's not, it's not.
It's not supposed to be. I'm just trying to hold up the flow of meetings.
You know, somehow, you know, the, the committee commission feeling is, is, uh, it's, it's there, but it's, it's getting quiet. I, I just wanted to, to give a little more background from having gone to a lot of meetings that, um, from as early as I can remember, the county's position of Mills Act has been when hell freezes over. That's the official county position.
Hasn't what, I misunderstood. What did you say?
The county will support the Mills Act when hell freezes over. That's, that's been the, you know, every time we've acted, asked, that's kind of been the response. And.
Are you suggesting that climate change is going to influence the Mills Act?
Well, it probably will. No, but, but what I think we decided in the past was not to have high expectations, but to keep asking. So I think what Barry suggests is, is, is good, you know? Check in with the supervisors, find out what their feeling is currently. But, but I wouldn't have, um, I, I wouldn't, I would be really surprised if they suddenly said, wow, we'd love to have the Mills Act. But there are counties that do. So it might, it might be a good idea to look at some of the counties that have the Mills Act and see how it works.
Yeah, I was just, sorry, if I could just suggest, if you do approach the board, I could, I could send out some additional information, but I think it would be, because the board of supervisors, they might not even know what the Mills Act is. Like I can see man and coding never ever been heard of the Mills Act. So I think it would be good to do research and understand how it works. So if they have questions, you know, you'd be able to talk about it and I can set up some information.
Annie, may I ask you a question? If, if the, uh, is the, um, is it the board of supervisors then ultimately approves that the county can accept the Mills Act? Is that the mechanism that works?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Linda. Um, I have a, a couple of comments. One, um, in going back and looking at the notes from the goals, you can see that the, the discussion of coming up with evaluating the feasibility of it and, um, how to, uh, how to have, uh, how to go about talking to the supervisors to, uh, inform them and get them to get on board for the Mills Act was discussed. But the supervisor's attitude has continued, as Carolyn says, to be the same. So there was no specific actions in developing a strategy to approach the supervisors.
Thank you for that. Very good. Very important to say.
So for me, I know with Neil being, um, you know, his expertise being in the real estate, uh, arena, he is a lot more familiar on how something like this would impact housing and, uh, and development and so on, where I don't. And I would be for approaching my supervisor. I would really like us to try and put together as a commission some strategies so we're all on the same page in promoting the benefits and acknowledging the, the limitations or deficits. But, um, you know, presenting it as a, together, even though we're going separately. A second, at one of the webinars that we were, uh, told about and took lot, uh, in the springtime, the Mills Act came up on one of them. And I think it was that tools, tools for homeowners and such. And the Mills Act came up and I asked the question, how many counties, cities had implemented the Mills Act? And the, um, presenter acknowledges that really very few had. So it really is in the, the low percentages statewide when you take in all the counties and cities that are part of the CLGs. Um, but I think when I mentioned though, that San, that I represented Santa Cruz County as a commissioner and we did not have it. Someone spoke up, I don't know who, but they said they were very surprised. They thought Santa Cruz County would definitely be someplace that did, had implemented the Mills Act because of our history. And I think our, our emphasis on preservation of our history. So I, I thought that was great, but again, disappointment that we hadn't. And I think this is something we should pursue uh, because we, in a way, don't have a lot of other options for our homeowners. That's the end of my comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Linda. Um, I think that it's easy to see where our commissioners would be in favor of the Mills Act. It sort of goes one way. It's all positive for the Historic Resources Commission. It only encourages preservation of historic properties with no downside risk to us. The downside risk is the balance of the expense of doing it in the county budget. And fortunately, that's not our concern. Our recommendations should be based on what's good for historic preservation. So clearly we want to keep this going as one of our goals, um, and continue to deal with it. I also want to mention that what has kept coming up throughout the conversation is talking about our supervisors, that our supervisors have been, uh, uh, very discouraging. Well, let's recognize that we have one brand new supervisor in place right now and two more coming this fall. So the nature of the board of supervisors itself is shifting. And we don't really know how they will, um, how they will shape as a group and how their thinking will be. So for us to stay continuing with our goals and putting it in front of them and educating and informing them about the benefits of the Mills Act seems like a natural. So this seems like a very important goal to maintain. My question would be, where do we go from here today to the next revisiting of goal number five? Any ideas?
Um, I just, I do have one thing to add, which is I, I've also talked to Stephanie in terms of, because it does require a significant, um, amount of planning staff time to develop the program, administer the contract. So if, if there's a concern about that that would be a problem for the planning department, then we can talk about it the next time that, that if that's the case, the planning department may have to fully supporting, supporting it at this time. But if it looked like it may be a workload issue, but I will, I will talk to Stephanie about that.
And Annie, when we talk about a workload issue, that immediately brings us to a budget issue, which is the cost of the staffing for that. So let's recognize, I think, Annie, you just brought something out, um, that's very important. It's more than the cost of the reduction of taxes. There is a secondary cost of the administrative cost of reviewing and implementing in order to grant those, uh, tax breaks. Okay. There's increased costs to the planning department, which will be a county budgetary item. Probably might even need, I'm going to propose a half-time staffer, a full-time staffer, who knows? But let's recognize that the cost of implementing the Mills Act may be far greater than we recognize at first visit. With that being said, do we revisit this goal at our next session when we go over our goal tracking? Yes, Linda.
I guess the question is, do we feel that we should start actively pursuing, pursuing this goal with our supervisors, uh, knowing that, you know, we might not be successful. you know, we might not be successful, but we're bringing visibility to it and letting them know that this is a goal that we feel is important and that we will continue to revisit periodically with them.
I think you just revealed your experience as chairman of this group in that statement. And I think that is very, very well said. Um, I'd like to use myself as an example. I would like to discuss this with Supervisor Capit. And the reason I would like to is to keep it as a lively conversation subject that perhaps he would discuss with candidates Hernandez and Dutra, one of whom will be replacing him. And he's talking to both of those candidates now and sharing some information. So for my district, I think it would be very good, and I'm very willing to meet with my supervisor about it. How about the rest of you?
Well, I, I think it's worth pursuing because if, if, if in reviewing the document that we started, you know, that Annie's put together here that we've started and which seems like a strong commitment to, uh, being more respectful of, of our historic buildings and, and as a way forward, it only seems more natural, and maybe this is an angle, that something is provided to help some of these, uh, owners of these historic properties, uh, a way forward. So if you're, if you're gonna, you know, ratchet up what some of the things you have to consider about, it seems like we ought to provide some kind of solution for them in the future. That may be an angle to help sell this, is that you are providing a way. I mean, with the, uh, Rispin Mansion, or no, that's a bad example, with the, uh, um, you know, the Bayview Hotel might be taking advantage of something like that.
Yes. I think that, that's a, that's a specific property that, to which this could be a benefit.
Right. So we don't like what's going on there. It sits there. It's not managed well. And here's some incentive when you put the hammer down on them to say, you've got to do this, at least on the exterior for this historic designation of Aptos, I'm being optimistic, for this historic designation of Aptos. And, uh, and here's some help for you right here with the Mills Act to be able to do this. So I think that's, I think it's worth us, not going to happen in a day, not going to happen in a week. But I think it's worth it for us as the Historic Resource Commission to get the ball, uh, rolling on, on, on this.
Well, I don't think that this following item needs a formal resolution, but, um, I'm going to suggest to the rest of the supervisors. I intend to meet with my supervisor. Perhaps the rest of you might want to try to discuss this with your supervisor between now and the end of the calendar year.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. And I would take on that challenge. I'd love to meet with Manu on that.
Yeah. And I don't think we need to, I don't think it needs to be a proper, a proposal or anything we vote on, but just rather a suggestion. Um, and then we can, uh, go back to this goal as we revisit the goals at the meetings and see uh, at what rate we want to accelerate. Does that seem acceptable to everyone?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, then need we, need we do anything further to conclude item eight D? Which is the discussion of the, all five, the Mills Act.
Well, what I have is, uh, as an action item that staff will inquire about cost of time to support the Mills Act. And she said she could report on that at the next meeting. Is there anything else that you would like on, on this goal?
Well, um, why don't we add that commissioners can report any updates they have of contact with their supervisors to discuss the Mills Act. I will try to have an update for the next meeting myself.
Well, Gilroy has a Mills Act over there, I guess, on Santa Clara County. Interesting. Oh, okay. Good.
Very good.
Okay. I've got that. And so, uh, in lieu of time, um, then for the next meeting, we will begin with goal number six.
Perfect. Very good. Thank you, Linda. Uh, I appreciate your, um, managing this element of the meeting. Thank you very much. Uh, next item is eight E, discuss options for acknowledging comments from the public in the minutes.
Um, yes. So let's see. Trying to advance the slides here. Um, so, um, the County Council has recommended that staffs can record in the minutes when members of the public speak on an item, but recommended that, that we do not try to summarize the comments or provide names of the speakers. And, and the Board of Supervisors has directed commission staff to provide action minutes only. Um, and then have the, um, details of the meetings available in the meetings recordings. And I have reviewed, um, minutes of other boards and commissions, um, to ensure that the HRC minutes are, are consistent with other, other commissions. Um, so let's see, the Board of Supervisors, it's the number of speakers, whether they intended in person or remotely, does not record speaker names or, or comments. Um, the Planning Commission does not note when members of the public provide comments. These are strictly action minutes. The Housing Advisory Commission notes when members of the public provide comments. Um, they don't provide names or comments. If Agricultural Policy Advisory Commission does not record when members of the public provide comments. Um, so I, I do want to make sure that we follow the direction of the Board of Supervisors and recommendations of Kami Council. But in terms of, uh, future minutes, I can certainly note the number of speakers on a particular item and, um, if this would be helpful to the commission and, um, officials would of course then choose to take notes on any items, uh, or comments from the public. On the comments meeting or, uh, request that staff issue a feature agenda. So those are some other ideas, but ways to recognize or respond to members, uh, comments from members of the public.
So Annie, to synopsize, you are telling us that the others, that other significant commissions merely, what, not merely, what they do is they acknowledge the number of guests and speakers, uh, but they do not list the comments. And if we adopt that as our form, we would be consistent with the other commissions.
Yes, I think the Board of Supervisors was the only body that I saw that reported the number of speakers. The other just said public comments in the slide. But we could certainly, you know, record the number of speakers on an item.
Um, if the other commissions are not doing so, maybe we do not need to do so as well. What do commissioners think about that?
I have some comments.
Yes.
Um, I think that I think it would be helpful, yeah, just for historic record. If we did, if we did just say, you know, four, four people spoke during the meeting, you know? And then, because that could alert somebody then to listen to the audio recording if they wanted to hear what that person said. And it would be maybe good if during the meeting, when somebody's speaking, uh, who is not a commissioner, that we could ask them to say their name clearly or, uh, maybe the chair could repeat their name or something so that their name is stated when they speak. That would probably be, uh, you know, an asset to anybody who was interested in what happened.
Very good. I'm not sure that this is something that needs to be determined as a policy that needs voting on. I can certainly tell you that as chair, uh, I acknowledge, uh, your suggestions and agree. I think that you can easily just include how many people were guests in the meeting or spoke at the meeting with a number, like the Board of Supervisors does. And I'll be sure that we clearly capture the names of any guest speakers. Need we, need we spend any further time, um, on this item?
No. Done.
Thank you very much.
Happy to do that for future minutes.
Thank you, Annie, and thank you, everyone. Okay. I believe that concludes new business. What I'd like to do is proceed as effectively as we can to complete our meeting. Neil, could you give us a report back from the History Fair Subcommittee, please?
Thank you. I'll try to keep my comments, uh, under 55 minutes. Listen, the fair was a lot of fun. I just am so, uh, thankful that Barry and I, I got to do that. I think we put a really good foot forward for the Historic Resources Commission. Uh, the time flew by. The success of our quiz that we put together can be measured by that we did not part with one book as the prize for getting all seven answers correct. So we were able, we were able to actually stump everyone that took the quiz there that thought they knew about their Santa Cruz history. And, you know, it was just a really fun interchange with some of the crazy answers that Barry and I worked to put together. And, uh, honestly, I can't wait to do it again sometime. I think it, it's such an integral part of our community to understand historically where we stand here and, and what we have. And, and the last thing I'll say is I was really heartened by the younger demographic that was interested in it. I mean, we had the college kids there. Barry will attest to this, that were just engaging and curious about our history. And I, I would say it was a very, very successful event, uh, for the HRC.
Thank you very much.
I also wanted to note that after much bureaucratic wrangling, I was able to get a check sent to Neil for this reimbursement.
Outstanding. Thank, thank you for that update, Annie. That's, that's great. Um, yeah, this is an excellent idea. And, uh, Neil and I felt, we felt that we were embraced by the MAA for putting out the effort to be there. And we networked with lots of other organizations. Right next to us was Paharo Valley Historic Association. And the amount of networking during the day with Ralph, the treasurer, and the other people working was just fantastic. Right next to them was DAR and, uh, Anne Fay was there and a bunch of other people from the DAR, and they were marvelous. And even the fact that I'm naming these people by their name is an expression of the effectiveness of our networking with other groups that are like-minded. And I certainly would encourage us to participate in as many history fairs as this county offers. So, um, thank you very much for that, Neil. And it was certainly fun to work together on that one. Uh, now, Annie, would you like to, um, uh, report on the updated language in the MAA contract?
Yeah, there it is. Uh, so, um, let's see, this was in May where the commission, um, uh, developed. Sorry about that. The commission, um, developed additional language to be added to the, um, language in the continuing agreement with the county and MAA in terms of the duties. Um, so, um, the underlying language is the new language add to the duties. Provide hands-on assistance, share resources and work together with other museums and organizations throughout Kami, help with exhibits, programs, lectures, other public engagement activities related to historic preservation. Um, and then, um, on the C below, um, the language was clarified there, um, for the, um, in terms of the contract, MAA attending TRC meetings, contract will attend at least one meeting of the HRC to provide an overview of the annual report highlighting the achievement relating to historic preservation. Oh, I'm sorry. That's the title there. It does say duties, I think, in the, in the agreement. I think I just typed it wrong. Short preservation duties as identified above.
Yes. Very good. Um, that seems clear to me. Anybody have any concerns or questions about it? Okay. I think that we can just accept that, um, adjustment.
No, Carolyn has a question.
Oh, very good. Yes, Karen.
No, I don't. I forgot to un, unraise my hand.
Okay. And what about Linda? Your hand is up also.
Oh, sorry. That was from before.
Not to worry. Very good. Um, Annie, thank you for that report and update. I think the language suits everything just perfectly. And we can just, um, I guess that will go back, that will be incorporated into the work with MAA. Um, very good. Let's see. That takes care of old business. Commissioner presentations. Do we have any informal items?
Um, I have a question.
Sure.
Uh, I was just thinking about some things that are, that are, um, just questions that I haven't found answers to. Um, you know, we had a number of, of plaques and interpretive panels put up. And I noticed recently that one of them on next to the sock shop is completely faded out. You can't really make out what the pictures were anymore. And it's only been up for like two years. So, but it's gone. I mean, you can't see it. And so I went over and looked at the ones on the Aptos barn and they're getting pretty faded. So I don't know if we have any recourse to, I mean, we spent so much time and energy getting those things created. Um, but I'm also wondering if the, if the interpretive panels are up at the Merman or, uh, and whatever happened till the agreement that we made to, with the Seabreeze Hotel after it burned, you know, we couldn't save that, save anything. But, but some interpretive panels were going to get put up and, um, so I just wonder if we could get some kind of report on any of those things.
Um, yes, I can report back. So, so you mentioned the ones that Aptos Village faded. What did you say? The sock shop?
Oh, you know, the sock shop. It's, it's a store that's right on the corner. Uh, I, I don't know the name of the street anymore, but it's, it's on Parade Street and the cross street that goes in front of New Leaf.
Okay. So these are also Aptos Village. I was thinking of the sock shop on.
No, it's Aptos Village.
Yeah. Okay. That's good. Okay. And the Seabreeze, um.
Seabreeze is in Aptos. That's.
I know. Yeah. Yeah. And then the other one you mentioned, are you talking about the Merriam?
Yeah, she was talking, she was talking about the Merriman Project. Now Carolyn, those, those panels will not go up for the Merriman Project until the building and the plaza are completed.
Okay.
They're in construction now. I drove by yesterday. They've made huge progress. I'm going to think to myself, it's probably eight months away, something like that. But it's probably going to happen when they pave the space between Dientis and Community Health. And when they're doing the paving and landscaping, I presume that the signage will go in then. Um, as for the Seabreeze Hotel, uh, I believe we're waiting until we, um, till the planning department gets a permit request uh, for rebuilding the Seabreeze. And then we will be able to, um, advise them that we, uh, require, um, some acknowledgement in the corner of the original building of the, um, Adolfo Castro Hotel.
Yes, that's correct. There are requirements as part of that, that they will provide some sort of documentation and that's to be determined by the.
Yeah. No, they'll face, they'll face that as they rebuild the property.
And I do, you know, Carolyn's comment about it fading does, I can check on the, on the Merriman. I can check on the, on the Merriman project and make sure like if there's another, you know, there's updates to technology and materials and that sort of thing, but I, you know, there's anything we can do to make sure that the materials they use don't fade because that is a shame if you go to all this work and then eventually they're illegible. And so, so that is a concern. So I can certainly look into that and report back at the next meeting.
The ones at New Leaf are still visible. The one by the sock shop. You know, but that would be good. I think the materials, if, if whoever's hiring whatever company that makes these signs, if we could find one that is consistently good.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, um, thank you. I believe that's it. Now, um, let's see, moving on to the end of our agenda. Annie, do you have any staff updates for us?
I believe that I covered the items I wanted to mention.
Yes.
I, I did want to just, I did note about the California Preservation Conference, but yeah, please, please do plan to listen to at least one session for that. But yeah, those, I, I think I made my other comments already.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, now that brings us to item 12, the written communications, and we have an email from Jessica Ayala. You may have all seen this. I do not know what the disposition was. Does anyone know the results of the vote by the Fairgrounds Board on keeping the old barn?
Was there a vote?
I believe they were supposed to deal with that in their last meeting and that this letter was written towards that purpose.
I believe I wrote, read something that they approved the barn coming down. But the Grange, um, the Grange Hall that she's asking about sits at the back entrance. And that's a separate building.
Okay.
And I don't know, does anyone? Annie, do you know anything about the Grange Hall back there?
I, I don't. I was, I did send Jessica some information and hope to, to speak with her next week to get more information and let her know sort of what the process is for, you know, adding a property to inventory. So.
Is, is there is there a proposal to take down the Grange?
No, no, I think we're mixing up the barn that I think they.
Correct, yeah, we were mixing up the barn and the Grange. You're right.
I think they're referring to this in her email. Is this, this is known. I did a little research. It's called the Madonna Grange. Is that correct? So this building, which was actually, apparently some effort was put in to rehab it and save it several years ago, and it's being used as a meeting place.
It's a pretty, it's in pretty good condition.
Yeah, so I didn't get the feeling, I think the email is just a question from the public of saying, well, this was the original Grange that served in that area and was there at the Fairgrounds and is it possible to make this a historic landmark? I think that's all there is to that. And outside of that, I don't know how you get there from here, but my understanding from looking on the web is that it's, it's used pretty consistently as a little meeting hall.
Well, the other thing is, I think to clarify, I'm quite certain that the state of California owns the Fairgrounds. I believe that, I believe that every county Fairgrounds in every county is owned by the state. And what the state does is it leases it back for zero amount of money in exchange for every county guaranteeing that they will hold a county fair. If you don't hold a county fair, you don't get to own a Fairgrounds. It's just that simple. So I believe the state of California owns it. Now, the Kelline family manages it. Young John, I believe, John's son, is the current general manager of the Fairgrounds. That is in my district. And I will clarify and report back at the next meeting.
Perfect.
About the existence of the Grange Hall.
Is it, is the, is the Fairgrounds in the county or the city?
Fairgrounds in the county.
Yeah, I did look up the owner on our assessors' information. It said, I think it said the Fairgrounds Association, but I don't, I don't know the former relationship with the state. So, yeah, if you want to report back on that period.
Yes, I, I will, I will provide an update on the Grange Hall at the Fairgrounds for our next meeting.
Cool.
Perfect. I will provide an update on it. Yes, on, okay, good. Thank you very much. Are there any other? Okay, that was the written communication. Any review of items for future agendas? I think we've essentially got a good overview. Should we go over our agenda for the next meeting at this time?
Please.
Okay, there's a lot on there. Let's see.
May I, in this interlude, make one suggestion moving forward? Is it for the sake of saving paper, I don't mind if it's printed back to back. But I do take exception when there aren't page numbers because it's very, very confusing trying to look at back-to-back documents if there aren't page numbers on the page.
Very good. Um, I think we can easily accommodate that. Could we not, Annie?
Well, I can certainly provide page numbers for each separate document. If that's all right, it's a bit of a task to merge all of the separate documents into one document with page numbers.
No, no, I'm talking when there's specific documents for each, each section.
Oh, each.
Yeah, whatever, you know, it's just nice to have.
I'm happy to number, if that would, if that was work for your commission, I'm happy to provide page numbers for each attachment. Like I see the gold track. It doesn't have page numbers. If that would work, it, it is a bit more work to try and merge everything together and provide.
No, no, I think they can be kept separately, but individually, individually numbered.
No problem.
Great.
Okay.
So I believe what we want to do is review the items for the future agenda before closing the meeting. And the future agenda will, will start, the next agenda will start with all of the normal items, the protocol of the normal items through number four, public communications. And then do we have any consent items at this time for the next meeting?
Um, that would be the, the normal consent item of the resolution.
Got it. We'll add that. Okay, we'll leave room for public hearing items to see if any come up. Under new business, do we have any new business coming out of this meeting that will come up in next meeting? Okay, temporarily, new business remains open. For old business, we will have an update on the.
Um, Barry?
Yes.
Under new business, I had to look at a motion for a letter to the board of supervisors. Let's see, and the letter would include mentioning of funding for updating the survey.
Very good.
Request for miscellaneous operational funds and educational outreach. So basically, we were going to, I guess, either have a letter presented to us that would cover those things for us to vote on and, and sign from the board, from our board. Or we were going to work on putting it together.
I think it's great for you to bring that up. My understanding is that, my sense for it is that we're going to need to put together, that the work has to get done between now and then.
So I have down here that there would be a motion, I guess, to approve a letter to the board of supervisors. And then and then also, um, oh, that's right. So the, and then the goals, which on this agenda items were number C and D were going to be moved to old business.
Correct.
Since it's a recurring agenda item.
That's right.
So the agenda topic of goal action items and goal reviews will end up coming under old business. And oh, and then also we were going to, I have here about your draft letter.
Yes, that's what I was just about to mention when you raised your hand. Is that we will be, Neil and I will be preparing the final letter and sending it out. We'll be reporting on that under old business. Though I believe that the way we did business today, that we do not need further approval, we'll just be presenting the final letter that went to the board of supervisors under old business. Does that seem right?
Yeah. Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Also, under old business, we will have an update on the Fairgrounds Grange Hall by me. Are any other commissioners preparing reports for the next meeting?
I believe the commission would want to report back on conversations, they, if they have any conversations with the board of supervisors regarding the Mills Act.
Correct. Let's put that also in as an item of old business. And with that, I think we have everything that we can at this moment list for next month, next meeting's agenda. So at that point, I think we finished the business of the day today. Does anyone have any last comments they would like to add?
No.
I'd like to thank everybody for their attention and focus during this meeting. Thank you for lasting out with us. We'll do our best to have the next meeting be shorter. We may not have to get into such detail as we did today, but I think what we did today was important and that we have some good information that we can pass forward. So with this time, I would like to adjourn the meeting. I'd like to thank you all for attending and see you in October.